I'd like to call the May 31st Special Planning Commission Meeting to order. Could you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Marsters?
Present.
Commissioner Silberman?
Here.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Present.
And Chair Gutierrez?
Present.
Public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on future Commission's agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anybody here to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? That's not on the agenda? Okay. Moving along to study session. Meridian 25 Office Project Study Session. Laura?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. I'm Laura Russell, Senior Planner. This evening, we're holding a study session for the Meridian 25 Office Project, which is a proposed office complex on Industrial Road at the corner of Branston Road. So here's an outline that we've proposed for the meeting tonight. There will not be any formal action by the Planning Commission, but an opportunity to hear about the project, to receive presentations, ask questions, provide comments. So that's really the intention, to provide a lot of detail and to help everyone to understand the project. So first, we're going to have a presentation from staff. So I'll provide you some information about the background and the entitlements and the proposed project. And then the city's consultants will provide some information in regards to the environmental review. Then there'll be an opportunity for the applicant to present key aspects of the project, including their outreach, architecture, with some emphasis on their transportation demand management plan. We'll be happy to receive questions and comments from the Planning Commission, as well as questions and comments from the public. So many of you are familiar with the project context, but as a reminder, it's in an existing industrial and commercial area, but it is actually quite close to Caltrain. It's about .7 miles to the Caltrain station. And if you take Commercial to the undercrossing at Arroyo, it's only about .4 miles to Laurel Street. And as you know, Highway 101 is directly adjacent at the rear of the site. The site includes six legal lots right now, with a total area of 7.9 acres. The general plan designation is General Commercial-Industrial, and the zoning is GCI, also General Commercial-Industrial. It's currently developed with six one-story buildings and surface parking and associated landscaping. The total area of the existing buildings is 134,187 square feet, so just about 135,000 square feet right now. These buildings and the associated parking and that landscaping would all be removed as part of the project. Here is the proposed site plan with Highway 101 at the top and Industrial Road across the bottom. The parking structure goes across the back of the site next to 101. The two office buildings are a mirror image of one another, fronting out into Industrial Road. There's perimeter landscaping and a central amenity space in the center between the buildings. Access to the site is at the end of Branston, at the end of the cul-de-sac there, and also off Industrial on the right of the site plan. The two new office buildings are proposed to be six stories. They each have a floor area of 264,260 square feet, so the total proposed floor area of the buildings is 528,520 square feet. The architecture is contemporary in nature, with glass as the primary exterior material and aluminum panels and stone as secondary materials. The rendering on the left is a view from Industrial. So this is the two buildings. You can see a little bit of the angle of the space in between the buildings there. And the view on the right is an interior view, basically from the parking structure. And the applicant's going to talk a little bit more about the design and architecture, but this gives you a sense as we move through the project. On Industrial Road between the two buildings, there's a central entrance feature which leads to a courtyard. So the larger rendering is that architectural feature, which kind of announces the project on Industrial Road, welcomes people into that central area. And then there's a bird's eye view of the courtyard, is the small picture on the right. The applicant is proposing an extensive landscaping plan with 78,920 square feet of planting, and that results in about 23% of the site being landscaped. On the landscaping plan here on the slide, I've highlighted the street tree portion of it, because it's a pretty significant planting plan. Along Industrial, they're proposing 16 southern live oak trees. On Branston, 11 Carolina laurel cherry trees. There's also, as you can see, trees scattered throughout the entire site, as well as on the right-hand side where the driveway and parking area is, there's trees throughout the parking area. So they're proposing a total of 150 new trees. All of those are 24-inch box size or larger. So turning now to parking. The municipal code requires one parking space per 350 square feet for business offices. So the project requires 1,510 spaces, and that is what the applicant is proposing. The majority of that parking is located in a parking structure. And this is a section drawing that we included to help illustrate how the parking is located underground. So you can see that there's three levels of underground parking, and that's shown here in kind of the lighter gray color that has a little bit of a hatch to it. In this section drawing, Highway 101 is on the left, and Industrial is on the right. So there are two levels of parking that are underground that have a larger footprint, and those extend out underneath the project amenity space. So all three of those levels of parking are below ground and not visible to anyone. Then there's one level at grade and two levels above grade. And here's a rendering of the parking structure from 101, and this also shows the top of the office building behind the parking structure. You can see that there's aluminum panels that are similar to what's proposed on the office building. There's also a stainless steel grill feature to add architectural interest to the center of the building. And so they've done quite a bit of work to make the parking structure complementary to the office building and to add some visual interest from Highway 101. There's also trees on the upper deck of the parking structure, as well as between the parking structure and the freeway. The municipal code also requires bicycle parking for a project such as this, as the Planning Commission is aware. The project slightly exceeds the code requirement. They're proposing 152 short-term and 80 long-term spaces. So you can kind of see here on the site plan that those are spread out throughout the site plan area. There's kind of an emphasis on those front corners, and that's been an important discussion point in terms of connecting the project out into the neighborhood and into the paths that connect it to transit into downtown. The applicant's going to talk about this a little bit as well, but this has been considered a key feature of the project as it's been reviewed. So this is a close-up rendering of that corner with the bicycle parking. There are racks at this location for short-term bicycle parking, as well as long-term bicycle parking there at the corners right off of the pathways. The applicant is also proposing to go into a development agreement with the city. So subject to the final terms of that development agreement, the developer will provide for off-site improvements to enhance connections to Caltrain, to downtown, and to El Camino Real. Those improvements are expected to include some of the following. On Commercial, we would expect to see sidewalks on one side, Class III bike lanes, and streetscape improvements. And this would create a direct link from the project corner to the Arroyo Undercrossing and then to El Camino Real, downtown, and Laurel Street. On Old County Road, they would continue the East Side Connect improvements, so that would kind of fill in that missing link between Terminal and Commercial. And they're proposing improved crosswalks at the project intersections. There's a summary of some of the key points of the development agreement that's included as Attachment 4 to the staff report this evening. It's provided as informational information to the Planning Commission. It'll be the City Council that will make that determination, of course, but we wanted you to have a sense of what was being proposed. So I wanted to talk a little bit about general plan consistency before we talk about the entitlements, because we know that's kind of always the first finding, right? Is it consistent with the general plan? And so the project is consistent with the general plan land use designation of General Commercial-Industrial, which allows, and I'm going to go ahead and read it, all retail, service, office, research and development, and industrial uses. This designation offers maximum flexibility to allow the market to determine the mixture of non-residential uses. So this classification does not have a density or intensity limit, similar to the way that general plan classifications for residential have a certain number of units that are allowed per acre. So this classification does not have that type of density or intensity limit, but the project does comply with the floor area maximum. That's included in the GCI in the zoning district. So the applicant has tried to comply with the intent of the zoning, which, of course, implements the general plan. So we'll turn now to the requested entitlements. The first is the zoning map amendment to change the site from GCI zoning to planned development zoning. So the project plans and the planned development plan, so those two things work together and become the zoning that apply to the site. So for this request for the zoning map amendment, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation, and the City Council will make the final decision. The project complies with all of the development standards of the GCI zoning district, except for height. The GCI height limit is 50 feet. The proposed height for this project is 87 feet 3 inches to the top of the parapet and 97 feet 2 inches to the top of the roof screen. Some limited mechanical equipment may also be allowed to reach 100 feet if the director finds that it would be minimally visible. So these are the numbers that are currently in the plan set and in the draft planned development plan. So these are the things that would kind of become the zoning for the site and would move forward. So to help everyone understand what that means, we included this slide, and the applicant will talk more about height in his presentation. But this rendering has the orange and yellow lines to show those two different heights that I was just talking about. So the roof screen is architecturally integrated into the middle of the building, so that portion is taller. We really worked with the applicant to make sure that there wasn't just kind of one of those roof screen boxes that sits in the middle of the project, so they've changed this a couple of times in the course of review to try to integrate it architecturally into the site. So the roof screen section, that middle portion, would be the 97 feet, and then the majority of the building would have the lower height of 87 feet 3 inches. So the Planning Commission is familiar with the design review and the scope of that, and these bullets are really a reminder of the scope of the design review. It is pretty inclusive in regards to building proportions, massing, architectural details, includes landscaping, colors, exterior materials. And the applicant will talk a little bit more about the design and some of the revisions as a result of community feedback. And the city's peer review architect also reviewed this project and provided a fair amount of feedback that has been integrated into the plans that are now in front of you. The developer is also requesting a parcel map in order to change the legal lot lines, so they're like to reconfigure the site from six lots, which is the current configuration, which is shown on the left, to three lots, which is the configuration that's shown on the right. So now we can talk a little bit about the grading and dirt haul request. The underground parking structure requires a significant amount of grading. They would have to go down about 29 feet for the three levels of underground parking for the parking structure. And so that really ends up being a significant amount of grading, so there would be quite a bit of cut, a little bit of fill on the site. And the result of that is 123,886 cubic yards hauled off the site. So the applicant has proposed haul hours of 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and that would avoid the p.m. peak and still allow them to have a considerable day for those grading and off-haul activities. And then 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on weekends, with no holiday work allowed. The applicant's engineer has estimated that it will take about 78 truck trips per day, and that would be for a duration of about four months, with the total number of truck trips being 6,195 is the estimate. So the haul route is very important, given the scale of that grading operation. So arriving to the site, they would exit on 101 South via Britton, turn right onto Industrial, right onto Branston, and into the site. Only if they were required to, because of the location of where the trucks were coming from, really only if required, they could exit on 101 Northbound at Whipple and turn right onto Industrial. For the draft conditions of approval, which are included in your packet, trucks would be required to line up on-site. They would not be allowed to queue onto Branston to minimize any impact onto surrounding businesses. So when they're leaving the site, they would exit the site onto Branston, there's a light there, of course, and then turn left on Industrial, where there's another light, to take the left onto Britton to 101. And I want to make sure everyone's clear, they are not proposing to use haulie at any time for the dirt hauling operation. So the next entitlement is the protected tree removal permit. There are 48 existing trees on-site. All of those would have to be removed with the project. 37 of those are protected trees, as defined by the municipal code. That includes three heritage and 34 significant trees. There's an arborist report, which is included within the plans. And as I mentioned before, the replanting plan includes 150 new trees. All of those are 24-inch box size or larger. The applicant is also required to submit a TDM plan. That's a requirement of our code. They're going to talk about it in more detail, but for the purposes of this part, I want to remind everybody that they're required to reduce their vehicle trips by 20% from the standard ITE rates. That's required for the life of the project. There's regular monitoring and reporting that's included in the plan, as well as within the draft conditions of approval. And the city can require them to change the measures that they're using for trip reduction if they're not able to meet the 20% target for some reason. And they'll be talking about it in more detail. The project also requires review by two outside agencies, so I just wanted to mention that for the Planning Commission and for the members of the public. It's required to be reviewed for airport land use compatibility, and the first step of that process has already happened. The Airport Land Use Committee has reviewed the project and recommended that it be found consistent with conditions, which are kind of routine conditions and consistent with the type of conditions the city would impose upon a project. It's also required to be reviewed for the San Mateo County Congestion Management Program. So this is for any project that produces more than 100 or more peak hour trips. It has to be consistent with their TDM requirements, and so they have reviewed the plan and found it to be consistent. So we're going to be talking more through our consultant team about the mitigated negative declaration and CEQA review, but we are currently in the comment period for that mitigated negative declaration, and that ends on June 6th. And there's a lot of information on the city's website about how to read the MND and how to comment on it. And so in regards to community outreach, what staff will be doing is compiling all of those public comments on the project, as well as on the mitigated negative declaration, and will be presenting those to the Planning Commission at the upcoming public hearing. So far, in regards to community outreach, staff, of course, has provided notice to all property owners and occupants within 500 feet of the site. There's been information on the city website. And we've also had presentations for the Economic Development Advisory Commission, as well as the Transportation and Circulation Commission, and those TNC minutes are included within the packet for the staff report today. In terms of comments that we've received so far, just a quick summary, again, you'll get the complete comments for the public hearing. We've received about three or four emails with questions and concerns, five to six emails that include letters of support for the project. And then we've also heard from a couple of their tenants, just talking to us about timing and wanting to understand the project. So we have not yet received a really significant number of comments, but we'll put those together for you moving forward. So now we'll move on in the presentation to the city's consultant team in regards to the environmental review of the project. So we'll have for you this evening Rebecca Ald. She's with Lampfair Gregory. She's the city's lead consultant for the environmental review, so she'll provide you that introduction. And then we have Frederick Venter from Kenley Horn, and he's the transportation and traffic engineer that's been working on that CEQA review. And so he'll provide you quite a bit of detail, actually, about the transportation impact analysis that was conducted, because we've received a number of kind of questions about how that's been done. So we want to make sure that you get kind of the nitty-gritty details. And then I'll be back to kind of wrap up the staff presentation and kind of talk about the next step of the study session. So we'll turn it over to Rebecca.
Great, thank you. Good evening. As mentioned, I'm Rebecca Ald, Senior Planner with Lampfair Gregory and the Lead Environmental Consultant for the project. I'm here to provide a brief overview of the purpose of our analysis, the specifics of the analysis performed, and the conclusions that we reached. So as is customary under CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, we started with an initial study to determine whether a project may have a significant effect on the environment. The CEQA guidelines include a list of the purpose of an initial study, and I wanted to go over those briefly as they're relevant to the project. So the first is, the initial study provides the basis for deciding whether to do an EIR, which stands for Environmental Impact Report, or a Negative Declaration or Mitigated Negative Declaration, the difference being whether or not the project would cause a new significant impact to the environment. The initial study's purpose is also to enable a forum for project modifications or mitigation that could reduce potentially significant impacts of the project, to provide a factual basis for the city's findings when they decide whether or not to approve the project, to eliminate unnecessary EIRs. So that's why we start with the initial study to determine the appropriate environmental document, and to determine whether there is a previously prepared EIR that covers the current project for at least some of the impacts that are potential. Okay, so as noted, we started with an initial study, and this initial study analyzed all of the project impacts and all of the environmental topic areas under CEQA. And we included technical documentation wherever necessary to support our conclusions. For this project, because it's a relatively large project for the city of San Carlos, we made sure to have the documentation necessary to support those conclusions. This included modeling of emissions for both air quality and greenhouse gas, record searches and coordination related to cultural resources, including Native American resources, a geotechnical investigation of the site soils to make sure that we had characterized them appropriately, environmental site assessment to determine a history of contamination on the site, and a transportation impact analysis, the traffic study, which, as noted, Frederick will go over in more detail. So also, as I mentioned on the last slide, we considered whether impacts were adequately addressed in the general plan EIR, because this project is within the area covered under the general plan and is within the growth assumed in the general plan EIR. So going back for a moment to the general plan EIR, the impacts that are identified under a general plan tend to be broader, such as the lack of agricultural or mineral resources, population changes, such as the jobs/housing ratio, which relates to unemployment projects such as this, and regional traffic congestion. So on to conclusions. Through the analysis that we performed, we were able to determine that the majority of impacts would not be significant or could be reduced to levels that would be considered less than significant through mitigation identified in our analysis. So to go over really briefly, potentially significant impacts and the mitigation that was identified. During the construction period, construction vehicles would generate emissions and also dust. So per the Air District standard procedures, there's mitigation requiring implementation of basic construction measures to control those two things. There's not a lot of biology near the site. However, there are trees on the site and nearby, so there's the potential for nesting birds. So right before construction starts, a biologist would go and identify any active nests that were occurring at the time, and if any were found, to create a buffer area around those nests so that they would not be disturbed. So again, there are no known cultural resources on the site. However, since the site was developed, there's been some changes in the rules about what's considered significant, specifically as it relates to Native American resources. So we've included mitigation that once the site soils are uncovered, so once demolition has happened, but before construction starts, that the site be reassessed, and in the event of discovery of any currently undiscovered cultural resources, that those be handled appropriately per current regulations. Also, as noted, a geotechnical report was performed. We live in a seismically active area, and the site soils at each particular site change which engineering is used for site foundations and construction techniques. So there's mitigation to ensure that that engineering is site-appropriate. Next is, there were contaminants previously discovered on this site. They include a tar-like material in the soil and chlorinated solvents in low levels in the groundwater. Through coordination with the Department of Toxic Substances Control, or DTSC, it was determined in 2004 that the site was safe for continued operation, and a Removal Action Work Plan, or RAW, was put in place, requiring ongoing groundwater monitoring, an operation of a sump and recovery trench to continue to pull the tar-like material from the site and subsequent disposal of that material. So under the existing RAW, an office use such as that proposed is allowed, and RAW requires coordination with DTSC for construction activities and an updated RAW once construction is complete. Additionally, because of the age of the buildings and the historic presence of dry cleaners at the site, there's the potential for hazardous building materials, such as lead-based paint and dry cleaning chemicals, to have contaminated the building cells. So that will need to be assessed prior to demolition of those buildings and abatement per existing regulations to occur before those buildings are brought down. So as mentioned, the traffic engineers are going to go over in more detail the traffic impacts and mitigation, but there is mitigation included related to safety enhancements at the industrial driveway. Also, as noted, the project is within the area covered by the city's general plan and within the growth assumed under the general plan EIR. That EIR identified a significant impact related to That EIR identified a significant impact related to the regional freeway congestion and the citywide contribution to regional freeway congestion because of growth in the When the city adopted the general plan EIR, they also adopted a statement of overriding considerations, which weighs the economic and social benefits of growth within San Carlos against the unavoidable impact of regional freeway congestion, and determined that that impact would be acceptable. Additionally, the general plan EIR had included mitigation in the form of transportation demand management plans, which would reduce the trip generation within the city itself. So because that impact, though significant, was adequately addressed in the overreaching EIR for the general plan, it was determined under CEQA that this would not be a new impact of the project and relatedly other subsequent projects within the city itself. So this would not be a new significant impact of the project and would not require preparation of an EIR under CEQA. Therefore, based on these conclusions, a mitigated negative declaration was determined to be the appropriate environmental document for the project. And that is what was prepared along with the initial study and circulated, currently in its circulation period for public review. Thank you. I want to pass it to Frederick now to talk about the traffic study.
My name is Frederick Venter with Kinley Horn. I'm going to walk you through the traffic analysis and the findings of the traffic impact study. So we always start with trip generation. I have to share that the full traffic analysis that was conducted here is consistent with all CEQA requirements, whether it would be a mitigated negative or an EIR, full consistency with methodologies required by the city and San Mateo Council of Governments and Caltrans. The total new trips for the project would be 492 AM peak hour trips and 364 PM peak hour trips. We've given credits for existing uses. On the site, where we utilized ITE trip generation for these uses, which is a reasonable assumption, especially since there are quite a few vacancies on the site and we did not know what those were. We did go back historically and add some information on some of the historic uses and applied that to the trip generation. This is a summary of the trip generation table that is in the traffic impact study. The first row shows the office building of 528,000 square feet. That's the proposed project. It would generate 725 AM peak hour trips and 670 PM peak hour trips. That's gross. Then the applicant gets credit for the existing uses. And like I said, we use the ITE trip generation for light industrial, health and fitness, office building, and then a shopping for the shopping-related uses. We also calculated from the Urbemis model and is also consistent with data for the city, an approximately 10.9% reduction for context trips that would relate to a reduction in that net demand. So that would be people that could bike, take the bus, walk, carpool to the site. The applicant will talk a little more about the travel demand management plan that was prepared. The city's goal is 20%. We took a 10.9% reduction. So the analysis is actually slightly conservative, because we only took 10%, almost 11%, and not the full 20% reduction. Trip generation, we use the city's general plan traffic model to determine trip generation and distribution from the site. Approximately 36% of the trips would go north on 101, 20% south, 5% north on El Camino, 7% south on El Camino Real, 9% would go to Redwood City, and 23% of the trips would stay internal to San Carlos. I think both Rebecca and Laura mentioned to you that we are consistent with the general plan. The growth that would be induced by the office project is currently within your general plan. It was taken from zones 7, 8, and 9 in the general plan. So subsequently, these trips are included in your general plan. And that's why I think Rebecca explained to you that we are consistent with the general plan.
Can you explain this slide a little bit more?
Sure. So the general plan had land use assumptions for growth in zones 7, 8, and 9. The office, the proposed project would be located in those areas. So what we have assumed was that that cumulative growth.
The office project is located in area 7, not 8 or 9. So how do you suddenly get 5% or even 25% from area 9?
So the general plan is a general land use assumption for growth assumed within those three areas. And the mix of the growth that was assumed for the future included industrial uses, office uses, and shopping center uses. So what we are saying is that for the office uses, so we backtracked the growth to traffic, to trips. And we said the number of trips that would be generated by the future growth in this area, we worked that then back to the project and say the project would generate so many trips, so we would subtract that from the general plan growth.
So essentially, what you're saying is 100% of the office trips would be coming from this project?
Not quite. The 100% of the office trips is included in the growth from your general plan.
Right. And you've got 100% of the trips right here?
The, yes. But that's the trips, so that's the growth in those three areas. The trips go everywhere else. They distribute.
Right. But of the traffic that's supposed to come from office buildings, 100% of them are going to come from this project?
No, that's the incorrect analogy. We took the mix of the assumptions for the general plan, which would be industrial traffic, shopping centers, or commercial traffic, and office traffic. So let's say that that three areas would generate 1,000 trips. And we said this office would generate 700 trips. So those 700 trips form part of the future growth that was assumed in the general plan for those three areas of 1,000 trips.
So how many trips are forecast in the general plan for office buildings?
I don't have that at hand. I can go find that out. But it was, what was for office was not the full, there was less office planned than what's assumed for this project.
So there's more office planned for this project than assumes in the general plan?
Yes.
Okay. So already, there's more office planned for this project than is allowed under the general plan?
The analogy is incorrect, because like I said, the general plan assumes certain land use assumptions. So within all the land uses that we build out in zone 7, 8, and 9, we are less than all the land. The trips that would be generated by the office project is less than the total general plan growth for 7, 8, and 9. That was our assumption. We did not go back and say only office.
Okay. Will you do that? Will you look at what's allowed for office and tell me whether it's more?
Focusing on transit, pedestrian, and bike network, the project has no impacts to transit and pedestrian bike network. But Laura shared with you that there's a tentative development agreement that proposes several bicycle improvements and sidewalk improvements on Commercial Street, Old County Road, and Industrial Road and the Branson intersection. The analysis methodology for vehicles that we use was consistent with, like I said, regional and local guidelines. We used the 2010 highway capacity manual moth methodologies between the city of San Carlos, the city of Redwood City, and Caltrans. The measures of effectiveness that we use is level of service and volume over capacity and on the freeway density of vehicles. For the freeway segments, level of service and delay, VOC for intersections and vehicle density as well. The significance criteria that we use for the traffic analysis for Caltrans is level of service C, and it's based on delay at their intersections. For the congestion management program, their standard is a level of service E. And for intersections, if the base is deficient, the VOC should increase by more than 0.01, you would have a significant impact. If it decreases beyond the E, we'd also have a significant impact. For Redwood City, the level of service standard is a D. If it's less than a D and the delay and increase, the increase in delay is more than 5 seconds, you would have an impact. And then for the freeway in E. So what we found was with these, that we did not have any impacts that were significant and unavoidable at the intersections except on the freeway. This map shows the study intersections, distribution from the site onto the city, local and regional street network. For existing conditions, so we took the project and added to existing conditions, the intersection of industrial and San Carlos, East San Carlos Avenue would operate efficiently. But the city has programmed a funded signal for improvement in the next year, and with the implementation of the signal, the impact would go away. Freeway segments, southbound 101, there would be a significant impact. And as Rebecca mentioned, within the general plan, these deficiencies have been adopted already. For cumulative conditions, no significant impacts have been identified on the intersections except on the freeways, southbound 101, Hillsdale to Rolston, and southbound Rolston to Holly as well. And again, these deficiencies have been identified in the general plan as well. Site impacts that we've identified, if you look at this graphic, intersection number 20 and 25, so 20 is commercial, 25 is the site impact. So it's sort of an offset intersection. And you run into risk that left turn vehicles could have head-on collisions if they don't know who's got to go first and who's waiting. So there's a recommendation to actually construct a median at the intersection number 25 and only allow right-in, right-out movements. We've discussed all the impacts, I think Rebecca went through them as well, for existing and cumulative and the site access impacts. So only the freeways are impacted significantly and unavoidable. And then the site impact is the right-in, right-out access.
Can I ask one more question before you leave?
Sure.
So am I to understand that the traffic is based on a model?
The distribution is based on the model.
Okay.
Generation is based on IT.
Generation is based on?
On the Institute of Transportation Engineers trip generation.
Which is a model?
No, those are empirical data that has been collected in the field and is used in the transportation industry to estimate trip generation.
So you're estimating based on a model?
The model has been developed based on travel patterns. So the model reflects existing travel patterns and anticipated future travel patterns. Yes, it's an estimation.
Based on a model? I mean, you didn't go out and count cars?
We counted cars for our existing conditions.
For your existing conditions?
Correct.
How does that vary? What percentage of, and this is, you don't have to answer it today, but what percentage in that model is from historical values? Okay? Because I know there's not a shopping center there.
So it's not a shopping center. So the land use that we use is called a shopping, it's called a shopping center because that's the land use that we think represents what would be in the building. If we went and identified each individual use, that trip generated, the trip generation for the individual uses, so there was a furniture store and there was, those would be much higher. If you have a shopping center, the rate goes down a little bit. And since we did not know exactly what the vacant uses are, and we couldn't go count them because we would underestimate the existing traffic, we went with a reasonable assumption that those uses present a shopping or retail development.
So what you're talking about right now, when you say an increase in the number of trips, that's based on some past time when the buildings were occupied?
Correct.
And not relevant to the traffic that's there today?
Correct.
Okay. So essentially, the traffic trips that are really going to be there are going to be much higher than what there is today?
Correct.
And based on that, does now those numbers become significant?
No. Because if we brought in the, so if we had the, if we assumed the historic uses, then we would have to adjust our base as well. So the delta, the increase in the traffic would still remain the same. So that delta that formulates a significant impact would stay the same.
But you just said that the number of trips is actually going to be much more than what you actually have for the increase in trips, right?
So we counted, so we use the existing, so for the existing use, we need to give a reasonable credit to the applicant. That reasonable credit we assign by using the ITE trip generation rates. If we had counted the traffic because of all the vacancies, those trips would have been a lot less than what that credit could be. One could argue that somebody could move in, let's say developer did not happen, so somebody could come in and occupy the building next week, and they could generate trips that are consistent with IT. So it's a reasonable assumption to say this is what we're assuming for existing uses of that building.
But that doesn't really reflect the reality of the situation today?
No.
So we'll have quite a bit of opportunity for questions and more comments. That's definitely one of the priorities of the study session tonight. I just wanted to make sure that everybody in the audience is aware of what the steps are. I know the Planning Commission is. What happens after a study session such as this is that a public hearing would be scheduled before the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission may consider taking formal action on many of the items. The Planning Commission has the authority to approve. And then some of those items would go forward with a recommendation from Planning Commission onto the city council for their review and approval. And if the city council approved those items, then the Planning Commission approval of the lesser entitlements would become active. So those steps of the public hearings would still have to take place after this meeting. And so one of the things we really wanted to do this evening is to understand the Planning Commission's questions and comments, so that we might prepare answers to those for the upcoming public hearing. And so we appreciate it. That's exactly what we're trying to get at tonight, is to understand your questions. And so we want to do the same thing and have an opportunity to hear from the public in regards to their questions and comments, so that we might also prepare additional information in response to those. So what we're going to do is, at the discretion of the chair, we can take questions right now for staff and for the consultants, or we can turn it over to the applicant for the applicant presentation.
I think let's let the applicant speak first, maybe go over some of the project highlights, and then we'll go to the public comment. Might answer some of the questions as well, so.
Thank you for having me. So let's see here, through the miracle of technology.
I think we need to disclose ex parte communication at this point. And I would like to say that I've met with the applicant three times at this point.
I have met with the applicant once.
I've met with the applicant twice.
Twice.
I think three times. Two or three times.
It all blends together for me, too.
This has been a long project, so.
Well, thank you very much for having us tonight. Let me know if you can't hear me. So a little bit about who I am and who we are at Windy Hill Property Ventures. So we are a locally owned real estate business. We buy and develop and renovate apartments and commercial office buildings. One of the projects that you might be most familiar with is at the corner of El Camino and Third in downtown San Mateo, is currently being constructed, and that's one of our projects. And we have several others in San Mateo, as well as Palo Alto, Redwood City. Our focus is the peninsula, and we seek to really develop long-term relationships in the communities that we develop. So we'll kind of skip ahead here. So you've seen a lot of these renderings. So you've seen a lot of these renderings. I'm going to show a lot of the renderings, but maybe add some additional color on the architectural, you know, and on some of the thinking behind why you're seeing this product at the end of 18-month adventure. And so the project site, as has been talked about, is at the corner of Branston. Why is this project significant, or why does this location work? And the reason we feel this location works is because San Carlos has a tremendous downtown as well as great access to the train. And that's really an untapped resource for office development in San Carlos. There currently isn't any office projects of this kind in the city that this proximity to the train and to the downtown. And so you can see here, we named the project Meridian 25, and some people have guessed why, but the reason why is because we are 25 miles from San Francisco and 25 miles from San Jose. And as the Bay Area continues to do what it's doing, that central location is really important for technology companies and other office users who are looking to locate on the peninsula. Let's see, it's kind of weird because I have to advance two separate slides here. So actually, one question that was asked was one of our bullet points. So when we acquired this project about 15 months ago, the project was 100% leased and operational. Upon acquisition of the property, we commenced the development process. The property was acquired as industrial land from the builder of the property, Don Tanklage. And so it operates, you know, functionally as an industrial project, but we really felt like that because of the general plan and the zoning, that allowed for 2.0 FAR density, that it was a good opportunity to try and make an impactful project here in San Carlos for office users. As the project was 100% occupied, we had a lot of ma and pa businesses. We had a lot of service businesses. So for example, a degree HVAC or Sign Works, who are some of the local tenant or companies here in San Carlos, they had fleets of trucks that would operate at the project. There's also several tile stores, there's a hydroponics store, I'm not sure what they do, but you can assume. And so those businesses were very concerned. And so we've made a very concerted effort at the beginning of our entitlement process to allow those tenants the flexibility to vacate the project whenever they wanted to. So for example, Signage Works, he went and found a new location, he asked us for 90 days to prepare that location, then he asked to move out. And so at this point, the project is a better part of 65% vacant. The reason we've carried it at that vacancy level is because we don't, one, we felt like we needed to treat the existing tenancy in a way that they could have some predictability. Again, these are small businesses. And also because it wasn't practical for us to re-tenant the building at this time until we're through the entitlement process. So this is an aerial view of the site. And there's six industrial buildings. As has been discussed, there's various uses on the site from fitness to retail to warehousing to industrial to true industrial, and then really there's quite a bit of just general office on the site. We're proposing two leading-edge Class A buildings, three and a half acres of landscape and open space. This is probably one of the things that we're most proud of as developers. No asphalt jungle, no big rectangular buildings pushed all the way up against the street or the setback. We've worked really, really hard to make sure and create a really inviting environment, both architecturally and in the landscape and the surroundings of the project. The project will be built to a LEED Silver Standard, which will be a big improvement based upon the current site use. So let's talk for a minute about environmental, and I'm fine, incidentally, if there's any questions throughout this process, feel free to ask them. So the site was heavily impacted in the 1950s by recycled oil. So this used to be actually the edge of the bay, prior to this site and 101 being created. And so folks would back up, one of the companies who used to do this actually still exists, but they would, you know, won't be named, and they would dump the oil. It was recycled oil out of tractors and trucks, things like that. That oil possessed not just oil, but a lot of contaminants. And once the site was constructed in the 70s, the site acted as a cap, essentially. The asphalt in the buildings are almost at 100% coverage. And so there was nowhere for those contaminants to be reintroduced to our open environment. Throughout a period of time, that has no longer been the case. You know, it will find a way. And so the prior owner did a very limited investigation and entered into, actually, he never entered into the RAW. That was something we did after acquisition. And what the RAW did is it basically says, moderate and don't touch anything. Don't dig holes, don't disrupt it, and if you do, you have to tell us. But for really the life of the project at this point, we're not obligated or required to do anything other than monitor, remove approximately 20 gallons of oil a year, which is what seems to be coming up at this point, and don't dig big holes. As part of the redevelopment, we elected to work with the DTSC, but also because of meetings with local community stakeholders, we found that environmental was a hot button in San Carlos. And so we went ahead and engaged the Environmental Protection Agency at our own election, and went ahead and pursued and have now fully executed an agreement with the Environmental Protection Agency, which will govern and supervise the redevelopment of the project. So the DTSC is a wonderful governing body, but the kind of contaminants that are on this site aren't really their shtick. And so the EPA will be able to make sure that we can assure the general public that the site has been remediated. One anecdote on this, our interests are completely aligned. We are going to invest a lot into a project like this, and the last thing we would want is for there to be any question as to whether or not it posed a threat to the occupants of the buildings, the general public, et cetera. So the buildings will be protected with a vapor mitigation system, as will the garage. The reason for that is there's off-site contaminants upgrading from us that are nastier than the stuff that's on our site. And so we want to make sure that these buildings will be protected for their lifespan from any sort of contaminant. What the vapor system does is it makes sure the indoor air quality stays acceptable. Okay. So, I gotta do this here. So we are, so as was discussed, the project complies with everything in the zoning except for the height. And so we're requesting a height increase, which is outlined in the planned development zoning findings. And the project, we feel, will be much better because of it. And so in addition to some of these things I'm going to talk about, I think there's also some other public benefit that will be associated with this height increase. So some of the benefits of the height include increased project setbacks. So you can see here I've highlighted two areas that show increased setbacks at the corners, which are where the project could potentially be most impactful as you're driving past. We also curb the front facades of the buildings. Again, as you pass the project, the buildings aren't abrupt, but they come to you. The L shape is very deliberate. So that actually isn't an ideal shape for an office building. Rectangles are better, they're more efficient. But the purpose of the L shape is to draw the majority of the mass of the building as far back into the site as possible. So you can see additional things to talk about. There's significant bicycle and pedestrian oriented amenities. Unfortunately, this laser pointer doesn't work on TV screens. But at the front two lower corners there, you'll see that there's separate entrances for bicyclists as well as pedestrians. There's a large central gateway element right in between the two buildings, which we're going to talk more about. Oops, was that me? I'll go back. There is parking. So this garage has been quite the endeavor to try and figure out a way to minimize its impact so that would almost be invisible. And we're going to talk more about that. But through the height of the building, we've been able to create three and a half acres of open space, which we feel really, really excited about. And then we've gone through great lengths to make sure that this isn't just a landscape, but that it's a really powerful landscape, that it's, you know, we want it to err on the side of over-designing the landscape rather than under-designing. And so when I think you compare a project like this to things you'd see in Redwood Shores or other local projects, it's, you know, this is going to set the standard, I think, for what a development project should look like from a landscaping perspective in San Carlos. Those two corner elements, we're calling pocket parks. You're going to hear me use that term again, so I just want to flag it here. This is our tree plan, which is the city has already talked, or city staff, Laura already mentioned about. You'll notice there's trees everywhere. There's trees on top of the garage, behind the garage, on the front, on the side. The two tree species that we selected on the front of the side were selected for a very obvious reason, and that was to provide maximum coverage in as quick a time as possible. And so you'll see, it's really going to be a tremendously attractive landscaped environment versus what's there today. Let me catch up here with my notes. So this is the gateway element, as we're calling it. And so this is right at the center of the project, in between the two buildings. We're standing across the street on industrial, and we're looking back at the project. So you can see there's, you know, outdoor benches of varying types. There's concrete benches, there's wood benches, there's, you know, furniture, there's all sorts of things out here to help engage people and to create a pedestrian environment. So that was our goal for the front of this project, was to create a pedestrian environment. This is a plan view of some of those finishes, you know, LED embedded lighting, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So it gives you a good idea of kind of the fit and finish that you're going to expect out on the front. This is an aerial view, which you've already seen. But again, the reason that we incorporated so many different types of materials is to add interest. So there's, you know, regular concrete, there's artistic concrete, there's wood, there's landscape, there's trees, there's glass, there's metal. All those come together to create a really pleasing environment. This is one of the pocket parks, there's one at each corner. And so these have developed significantly through our community outreach process and in working with city staff, and I'm going to talk more about that later. These areas are, as you can see, meant to receive people, specifically bicyclists to the project. That's why there's a separate bicycle speed ramp, I call it, or the landing strip from the sidewalks. And the point of that is to encourage bicyclists, once they hit the front of the project, to get out of the way of the pedestrians as quick as possible. You know, part of the front design of the project is our TDM plan. And our goal here, obviously, is, and Bay Area-wide, the goal is, is to get people out of their cars and to get people riding bikes or taking transit. And so our TDM consultant is going to talk a little bit more about that, and I will kind of turn the time over to her. Jessica, sorry.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Alba with Nelson Nygaard. So over the last several decades, we've planned for mobility and being able to get as far as possible, as fast as possible. And with widened intersections, widened arterioles, we've widened our freeway system in order to allow for this mobility to happen. And it's made it very hard for walking, biking, and pedestrian, or walking, biking, and transit to work effectively. And what we've done is that we've had this congestion that's driven the widening of roadways and intersections, which encourages faster and longer driving, which encourages more people to drive, and then that leads to more congestion. And this continues, and we're now at a point where it's really hard to squeeze in more lanes, more turn lanes, wider intersections into our footprint, into our existing cities. And what we can do instead is really focus on getting more people to walk, bike, and take transit. And the way we've built our cities is really encouraging the induced demand of traffic. So now we have TDM, and TDM has been around for quite some time. It was something that was heavily used in the late 80s and 90s through our counties and cities as well. And then we had a short break because we didn't really know how it was working. Now we've figured out many more ways to make TDM work. So TDM is really about providing more transportation options. We already have Caltrain, for instance, we have some bike network, but we can do more. And it's really about using the resources that we have to accommodate the development that we want. It's a matter of shifting time of travel, shifting the mode of travel, and shifting the route of travel. Examples of transportation demand management strategies include, for instance, free transit passes, car sharing, bike sharing, shuttles, financial incentives, gamification that's becoming big, having really good information available. So you can have a fantastic TDM plan in place, but it's very hard for employees to find the information, and it will not be effective. And the context matters. What will work in one location may not work in another location. So we need to tailor our TDM programs for the environment that we're in. And the effectiveness of these TDM programs, if we have a very basic TDM program, we might have a 10% reduction. With, say for instance, free transit passes, we might have 10% to 20% trip reduction. And additional strategies, such as parking pricing, charging for parking, or parking cash incentives that give transit and walking and bicycle passage, or riders, giving them a cash incentive instead of parking, for instance, can really encourage additional trip reduction. And then we have the location efficiency, which Frederick talked a little bit about, where density, mix of uses, access to transit, and good walk and bike conditions can yield up to 50% trip reduction in peak periods compared to the standard IT rates that Frederick was talking about. We do have several peninsula examples, and I'm bringing up a few larger employers here, but we have worked successfully with many smaller employers as well in achieving significant trip reduction goals. Genentech in South San Francisco, a couple of miles from the nearest Caltrain station, had a 78% driver loan rate in 2004. It's now down to, I believe, almost 55%. I think the 58% is a little bit high. So that's a 20 percentage point trip reduction, or driver loan rate reduction. Google and Facebook are both quite a distance from Caltrain and are roughly at 50% driver loan rate. Survey Monkey in downtown Palo Alto, soon moving to Bay Meadows at the Hillsdale Caltrain Station, only a third of their employees drive to work. And that's because they are in a very walkable and bikeable and transitable location. At Meridian 25, we are very, very confident that we can meet the 20% trip reduction, both by the location factor of having an easy 15-minute walk to Caltrain, having improved bike and pedestrian facilities, having access to downtown even in a shorter distance, walking down Commercial. And then having free go passes, free Caltrain passes for all employees in the development means that they can get up and down the entire Caltrain corridor at any time during the year, during the weekend, unlimited riding. And this is something that Caltrain has successfully implemented in many, many projects, and we're seeing great impacts of it. In addition to the required bike parking, the short-term and long-term parking that Laura talked about and Mike talked a little bit about, too, there will be, employees can bring their bikes into the office buildings. So in addition to the over 200 bike parking spaces, the employees can also bring them upstairs into their office space. For those who arrive on campus by other modes than biking or taking a car, if you want to go into downtown for lunch, for instance, there will be shared bikes for employees to use. It will not be part of necessarily a public bike share system, but it will be internally set up as a start, and then we'll see what will happen with them, how it expands. There will also be a commuter benefits program, which means that transit passes and vanpool costs will be reduced. costs will be reduced from a tax perspective, so employees pay less than the full price for train and bus and vanpool. And we've also discussed the additional street improvements a little bit. And again, the traffic analysis is very conservative here by only including the location reduction of roughly 10% or 11%. So we've talked a lot about improving our walking and biking environment, and this is something that is embraced across the state and North America right now, where Caltrans is focusing more and more on making sure that our streets work for everyone and are not just seen as something for automobiles. And several of the larger employers, as well as the cities and other public agencies in the Bay Area, are trying to really think about how do we improve our bike network? Because there is a very large portion, if we're looking at the 60% of a community, are interested but concerned in biking in the environment that we typically provide today. But if there were more low-volume, low-speed conditions, we could see a big shift. And if we want to talk about the hills that we have here, electric bikes and scooters are becoming more and more common, and we see them more and more frequently. And this is something that can work for an elderly, a senior person, or for a mom with a couple of kids, or a dad taking their son to baseball practice, or for shopping. So I think if we just give these opportunities, we will see more people biking. So that leads into my final slides about site access improvements, which both Laura and Mike have touched upon. Improved crosswalk conditions at the site, we're maintaining the bus bay for Samtrans. There will be a new sidewalk on Commercial, along with the Class 3 bike facility and the enhancements at the connection below the Caltrain tracks. And then continued crosswalk improvements, such as undergrounding of facilities and lighting, eight-foot wide sidewalk, trees, et cetera, at the site. And finally, there's a lot of change happening in technology that we can't ignore, that we need to take into account into our projects, where we see more ride-sharing, actually even carpooling, becoming more and more common again because we now have better tools. We have dynamic scheduling, similar to Uber and Lyft, but between a driver and a rider. And the only costs associated with it, no one is going to make money on it. It's more just a sharing of the costs of driving between two, an origin and a destination. We also have driverless technology, which could come, especially here in the Bay Area, very, very soon, where we could see big shifts in how we treat our parking garages, how we treat our loading zones, and other technology that is just out there waiting to happen. Thank you.
Do you have questions for? There will be some. She's not leaving.
No, she's not leaving.
If you've seen someone on an electric bike, it's kind of unnerving because they're going like 30 miles an hour, and man, they can really pump. One thing I wanted to mention, because I think that it was confusing to me, our TDM plan would have resulted in a reduction of trips by 20%. The traffic impact report that the city did only gave us credit for 10 of it. So of course, my question as a developer is why don't we get credit for the rest of it? And I think the reality is, is that we wanted to be conservative. We wanted to make sure that these numbers were conservative in nature. So let's talk back about architecture a little bit here. Give me one second. I'm going to have to figure out where I'm at. Okay, so this is where we started. So this represents two office buildings, the Central Pedestrian Plaza. You see a very large trash enclosure at each corner. You know, the articulation of the facade, we had a mechanical roof screen in the logical location where we could distribute the air conditioning units on the roof across the whole breadth of the building to make sure that we could get the distribution in the areas that we wanted it. And it made a lot of sense to have the garbage at the front of the project, for so that trucks could come in, get it, and get out of town. Upon meeting with community stakeholders and city staff, we got a lot of feedback. And let me go here. Let me see. There we go. So these are some of our meetings that we did in the early stages and then throughout our design process. This doesn't even encapsulate my meetings, for example, with planning commissioners, my meetings with the GESC board prior, former board and current board, my meetings with the Rotary, my meetings with the Chamber, my meetings with SCF, my meetings with the school board, my meetings with, on and on and on and on and on. So a lot of outreach, because we really wanted, early on, to get a lot of feedback on our design, on the concepts, on, you know, what we were putting out there. And so this was the product of that feedback. And so you can see, I'll go kind of flip back and forth if you'd like, but essentially, the corner of the building was what got the most concern. So we had already cut out the corner, we'd already curved the facade, we'd already brought the mass of the buildings back through the L shape. But what we did is we went ahead and we cut a balcony into the front of, a corner of each building, and we also moved all of the garbage and service inside of the building. So rather than have those outside in a large enclosure, we eliminated that enclosure. That enclosure is, you know, I don't know what the, you know, percentage would be, is a sixth of the size, or an eighth of the size of the original enclosure? And now it's predominantly for bike parking. The other big design shift was the entire front facade of the building. So city staff, as well as community stakeholders, really didn't like what we had come up with initially. They felt like, you know, we had a big concrete bench along the front of the building, and they felt like that was too much of a separation of the project from sidewalk at Industrial Road, and they wanted us to make this feel much more pedestrian, where someone walking by the project would feel very connected to what they were walking past. And so that's where a lot of these changes came from, and we were happy to get a lot of that community feedback early on. Let's see here. So in this corner that we focused on a lot already, this is just a different view, and it also shows you some of the material makeups of what is going to be put there. You know, it really gives you an idea, especially if you drive by the project right now and see what's there now, it gives you an idea of, again, the feel and the fit and finish that we're going to see here on this site. It's a very detailed design to make sure that we captured all of the elements that city staff and the general public wanted us to. Looking at this view into the central courtyard, again, isn't it nice to see something that is in asphalt? So you have three and a half acres of open space. And so, you know, even as you view back from the gateway element, as you're driving by this project, you're not seeing asphalt, you're not seeing cars. And I'm going to show you what we did to the garage to make sure that you won't see cars when you drive by the front of this project. Let's see here. Okay, so this is, I can't laser point, the top one is the front of the garage that faces the buildings, and the bottom two are the back of the garage that faces the freeway. So if you'll notice, on the garage that faces the buildings, we've tiered it down on either end, and we've essentially made the middle of the garage look like a building. And the reason for that, I'm going to go back a couple slides if I can figure myself out here, is because as you view straight down the middle of the project through the gateway element, we didn't want you to see headlights. We wanted you to see what appeared to be a building. And then as you approach the project from the south or the north, we stepped the garage down on either side. Now, this garage is not very tall, but we made it even shorter on either end so that as you approach the project, the landscape's going to completely obscure the view of the ends of this garage. So the idea is, is from Industrial Road, we didn't want you to be able to see it at all. Now, from the freeway side, you know, where, you know, as developers, we're kind of used to, hey, no one cares about 101, right? Well, that was wrong in San Carlos. So we went ahead and made a lot of changes to the garage in this site. And, you know, it's funny, because to me, they're so significant, having gone through the creative process to do it, but to you, I don't know if they looked that significant. But essentially, so this takes out landscaping, first of all, obviously. But the main center of the garage is now stainless steel. And the idea of that is that's going to be all growing vines. You have the two metal elements on either end, which, as you look over the top of the garage at the buildings, will tie them together so it looks really cohesive. And then, let me see what's coming next, I don't even know. This is the original design of the garage. You can see we had some metal, but there you see lots of white concrete. A lot of folks in the community and city staff really didn't like that, because we've all driven past garages. There's one specifically on 280 near Cupertino, where it's like, that is a lot of white concrete. So what we did here is we brought in the metal, we added trees to the top of the garage, not just to the grade level of the garage. And the next view is actually, I think, the best. So this gives you a great idea. Now, these trees are made translucent so that you can see the architecture, but we've added metal rails to the top of the concrete to dress them up a little bit. There's the aluminum canopies in three areas, there's the stainless steel grating, and then, of course, there's all of the landscape. So by the time this landscape is filled in, this garage is not going to be a lot of white concrete. Let me see what comes up next here. Okay, height. So height was a big topic of conversation, obviously, because people said, well, what are you doing that the zoning doesn't allow? Well, there's only one thing, it's height. So what we've done here is to take, I have two height slides, but this first one is that's the original design, this is a new. And so it shows you the distinctions between the two in one slide, which I thought would be helpful. And then in addition, I put two things for you to kind of reference. One is Palo Alto Medical Foundation, and the other is your billboard, the Clear Channel Billboard. So that gives you an idea of how much of the building is over the PAMP height or vis-à-vis the Clear Channel Billboard height, which is at 55 feet. This gives you an even better representation. Now, this, of course, does not have the roof screen shown, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute. But the majority of the roof screen will not be visible from the pedestrian level. And so, interestingly enough, your light poles on Industrial are 39 feet. And if anyone saw a creepy guy with a measure laser device driving around at night around San Carlos, that was me, trying not to point him at the airplanes and measuring these areas. So the interesting height that I was very surprised with is the TJ Maxx building. So, you know, it's a very interesting thing to go take a look at. You can really see, okay, there's 44 feet. What would it look like if you stacked two of those on top of each other, right? I mean, that's really what the height of this project will look like. Now, the TJ Maxx building is up against a setback, okay? So it's all the way on Industrial. So I would argue that even though it's half the height, it presents a lot of impact to a pedestrian. Now, that's neither here nor there. I'm not criticizing their project, I'm just showing the difference. PAMP, of course, is at 84 feet, and our proposed building height for the majority of the structure is roughly 87 feet. And I think here, I kind of messed up a little bit, I was going to show you. So see in this slide, that big metal thing at the top of the building? That's the roof screen. And so when you look at it from the front of the building, the idea is, is that it's going to go, and, oh, here's another one that I wanted to show you. Hang on. Sorry that I'm doing this. There's the courtyard view, that's the roof screen. So in this view, you can see where the roof screen stops, towards the front of the project, okay? So it's recessed all the way back to try and minimize its impact. This was the small, we went out, so initially, at this stage, you don't design your air conditioning, because who knows what's going to happen, right? We went out and designed the air conditioning. We said, okay, we got to figure out how we can make this roof screen as small as humanly possible so that we can service these buildings. And that's what we did. So you've seen that from many of the renderings tonight that has shown, there's your roof screen right there. That's the only corner that'll be visible. It doesn't come any further forward than you see there, and from the freeway view, the entire back of the building is absent of the roof screen, it's just inset to the courtyard, and so that part of the building will have the roof screen on it. So we did the best we could there to get rid of that mechanical roof screen. I think I'm about done here. So, oh, construction and haul routes. This was another thing that was brought up by a lot of community stakeholders, is, well, you know, tell me how you're going to get dirt off-site. So the first thing to remember is there are trips generated by the existing project, like the truck consultant talked about. So we're only talking about haul routes if those buildings have been torn down. So there is no existing uses on the site at that point. Now, what we've done is we've worked with our consultants to make sure that we had a route that was practical, that would allow us to keep the public safe and do it quickly. So this project benefits immensely from Branston. Branston has a stoplight, so we can introduce trucks to Industrial through a stoplight, rather than having them do their thing and come blazing onto Industrial. In addition, they will be turning southbound at the Britton stoplight. Again, a huge benefit for us. Every intersection where a truck is going to be making a major turn is going to be a stoplight intersection. That is good for our project. In addition, we've stayed away from Holly, otherwise known as the kryptonite intersection. Do not touch Holly. So we made sure that that was not going to be the case. And obviously, there's a time, so you're dealing with two things when you talk about getting the dirt off-site. Duration, how long do you want this to be going? And number of trips per day. What we tried to do is avoid the PM impact, but start early and get the trucks through the areas where they'll be least impactful. So that's the haul route. Let me see if I had anything else to say on that. Okay, I'm almost done, I promise. There are three financial benefits that are quantifiable right now, today in this meeting. Then there's lots of other things that we can muse about, but those three include property tax assessment. When we bought the project, it was paying very little in property taxes. Today, our assessed value would be paying somewhere around $350,000 a year in property taxes. At redevelopment, this project is expected to generate more near $4 million per year in property taxes. And this shows you how those taxes get divvied up in the county of San Mateo. And so, you know, $530,000 to the general fund, a million five-six to San Carlos schools, anyone who understands revenue limited, et cetera, et cetera, understands what that number means, and various other dollars going to, you know, other entities in the community which have a direct impact and indirect impact to San Carlos residents. The second category or benefit is the pedestrian street improvements. So this is going to be done at our cost and essentially, you know, at the applicant's cost. And essentially, what we're trying to do here is extend the east side connect improvements as well as build improvements that'll help generate the kind of environment that folks who I talk to in this part of the community really wanted, i.e. a more pedestrian, a more residential feel in and close to the neighborhood, that's some 700 feet away from the project. So industrial, Commercial Street will get a real sidewalk. We looked at doing sidewalks on Branston, incidentally, and with the concrete plan, it's not practical, it's not safe. And the benefit of Commercial Street is there's a crosswalk that goes right into our project from Commercial Street. In addition, the Arroyo Underpass is a tremendous benefit. So we'll shoot people from the project through a crosswalk, directly up Commercial, directly under Arroyo, directly over El Camino, directly into downtown. And then to connect them to the train station, we're going to go ahead and connect Terminal to Commercial Street to allow them to be on that side of the platform, or again, they can use the Arroyo Underpass. So these improvements include getting rid of old railroad tracks, tree bulbous, light poles, et cetera, et cetera, bike lanes and sidewalks. So if we go from the proposed public benefits, about $3.9 million is the street improvement in addition to that part, and this is what's included in the development agreement, by the way. An additional category in the development agreement is the City Street Rec Improvement Fund. That's essentially a discretionary for the city, and that's about, I think it's about 750,000 of the total is in that category. In addition, there's some miscellaneous items such as public art, pipe replacements, et cetera, et cetera. Permit fees are roughly $4.4 million. So some of those are direct city costs. So some of those are direct city costs, for example, the cost of the city to review our plans, et cetera. But, you know, a large portion of that is traffic impact fees, another large portion is grading fees. So for example, I'm going to move dirt on my site, here's how much dirt I'm going to move, so I pay the city, I think, about a million dollars. So that's kind of the total public benefit and fees section. So what we feel like we've tried to do, through our extensive public outreach on this project, and through working with city staff and other community stakeholders, is we've tried to achieve a superior design, that would benefit the community as much as possible, as well as make the potential for a successful project. And so, we think we've tried to really marry those two qualities together. We've tried to be very thoughtful about our architecture, about the pedestrian experience, as you approach this project, and we've tried to set what we hope will be a standard of excellence for this, for development in this part of the community, because obviously, any future development would directly impact us as well. So through the adoption of what is a very aggressive TDM program, through free passes, et cetera, you know, train passes for employees, et cetera, et cetera, that are in perpetuity, we feel like, you know, and with the caveat in our TDM program, that if these measures don't result in the reduction, the city has the ability to say, "Well, you need to do some things differently, you need to do more, you need to do other things." So, you know, it leaves it open-ended, so as technology changes or the world changes, the city can make adaptations to make sure we're achieving the anticipated result. Substantial benefits through job creation, property taxes, community benefits, fees, environmental remediation, and then some of the more ancillary things, like, you know, the idea that people are going to eat lunch in downtown, and they're going to help some of the downtown business owners, or some of the business owners in the east side of the community. All those are kind of ancillary, unquantifiable benefits at this point. So that's my presentation, I certainly appreciate your time, and obviously, we're here to answer questions, and city staff, so.
Are there any questions for the applicant right now? I've got quite a bit of speaker forms here, is there anybody else that wants to turn on a speaker form? And there's more. So I'm starting off with Miles Hampton.
I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Dimitri's going to take your time, is that what you're trying to tell me right now? All right, Scott Janki. I don't know if I pronounced the last name right, Scott? Janki, Jonki? Okay. Paul, you're next.
So, before we close, I have met the developer a couple times. A couple times.
Yeah, I think I'm going to, I've got about 15 speaker cards, so I'm going to, can I give you five minutes, Paul? I know that you probably have some things you want to bring up, but...
Thank you, appreciate that. Personally, I'm ambivalent about this project. I was glad to hear that the EPA will be overseeing the cleanup, as is appropriate, because the toxins at that site are comparable to Delta Star. So for your edification, I have a packet of chemicals. I won't go into the, all the different chemicals, that'll just bore you. Height is a big issue, and our concern, as a neighborhood, is that those lands north of this project will use this as a precedent, to build ones directly across from a neighborhood at the same height. So that is very concerning to us. So let me just say that. Traffic, no impacts, and yet there's a traffic fee? That doesn't make a lot of sense. And the finding of no significant impact, kind of sounds to me like this, the roads are congested, plus 1,500 cars equals congested traffic, therefore, there's no impact. There's going to be an impact. At the traffic and circulation, I suggested a mitigation of an on-ramp and an off-ramp, just like there is at Britton. That would take a lot of the cars off of industrial. I don't know, it wasn't reflected in its package, so I don't know if it was listened to, or it passed on or not. So that really seems disingenuous to me, and of no fault of the developer. It is what it is, and 1,500 cars is 1,500 cars. So I admonish you to use your critical judgment, don't just go by what you're told in the package that staff has put before you. There have been instances in the past, where we've pointed out that staff has made comments, made statements, that were not supported by the facts. And some of you may remember the dump sewer main, and that whole embroglio. We had 150 people petition the city council, to investigate why it happened, and how to prevent it. Haven't heard from them for three months, so I'd like to put this in the record. So please, don't take things at face value, use your critical judgment, and please be sensitive to the impacts on our community. And again, I have to, as president of GESE, I represent the entire community, so my personal, there are a lot of things I like about this project, but in the end, whether we support it or not, is going to depend on what the community wants.
Thank you, Paul. David.
Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission, I apologize that I'm coming late to this project, and obviously, listening tonight, a lot of water has gone under the bridge, in terms of what's being done. So I think maybe I'm being a little unfair to the developer with my point, but it's kind of a point that's actually bigger than this development. And I think it applies to how our city thinks about the future and where it's going. And that is basically, that this project is, is one example of all the projects up and down the peninsula, is exacerbating the current jobs-housing imbalance. That every city on the peninsula knows they've got a jobs-housing imbalance, and yet every city on the peninsula is approving more office buildings, more other buildings, more jobs, and not thinking at all about where that housing's going to be. And it's time for us to consider the fact that these projects have impact on our lifestyle in terms of housing, where people are going to live, how much traffic's on the roads, and elements like that. And so I just wanted to make that point, specifically for this project, if we take it for an example, got 1,600 onsite jobs, plus 51 additional jobs, which might be created as, you know, shops and whatever, for this project. It used about one and a half jobs per housing unit, that means, we're looking for about 1,100 units, to cover the employees for this project. And we have nowhere in the pipeline, anywhere near that number of units, within our community, or within our adjacent communities. Redwood City has over 2,000 units in the pipeline, they're going to use every one of them for their own town, we can't borrow them, really, I mean, people may be there, but they're coming from us. So we need to be aware that that's going to be an issue to be concerned with. So I think that all the cities, including San Carlos, needs to be responsible for this, and I think it's irresponsible to design without considering what the impact on the housing is. And the EIRs never, never talk about housing, it's not an issue, it's not an environmental issue. But it's really an issue in terms of our society. Second, well, and so I had a couple ideas on this project, that might work to help that housing project a little bit. One was that, with the TDM saying that they can reduce the trips by 20%, why can't the city reduce the parking requirement by 20%? That could save the developer close to $10 to $15 million for one of those underground parking garages, probably can eliminate that bottom level. Take that money, put it into a housing fund, or put it into, possibly, the developer takes that $10 to $15 million, and buys a piece of property somewhere near downtown, that they can then give to a nonprofit developer, to build affordable housing, or just general housing. And that could be up to 100 units of housing. And so that's, it still doesn't reach 1,100, but it's a way to kind of deal with it, and actually, that would be a way, you know, if you're going to use, say you got 20% reduction, you got to have faith in the fact you could 20% reduction. And so, you know, it's a hedge it and say, "Well, we don't have it." It doesn't make any sense, because they're saying they're going to enforce it. So why in heck are we asking 1,500 units, 1,500 parking spaces, if TDM's going to reduce them by trips by 20%? Why not lock 300 parking spaces off of there? So I've got a few other comments in this letter I just handed you, but those are the main ones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Don Eaton, I've been a 40-year, excuse me, a 40-year resident of this town. Actually, I used to sit on the Planning Commission for about nine years. I think that's about when they invented term limits, so, oh, well, that all turned out well in the end, I think. I'm here because I'm a concerned citizen at this point in time, and I feel I have a significant investment in the town that I live in, and will hopefully continue to live in for a long time. And therefore, I'd like to share some thoughts with you. Number one, in the business I am in, I see real estate projects a lot. And in my 43 years of being in the business I'm in, there are very few perfect projects. They're rare, there's hardly any. I think the last one I saw was in downtown Palo Alto, and it just had everything going for it. We're not in that circumstance here. However, if a project is well-designed, it can be a very good project. This one fits that mold, from everything I can tell. I think it fits in terms of its location, in terms of its freeway accessibility, in terms of how the traffic would work on something like this, in terms of its relatively minimal effect on residences, especially on the east side, because it's so far away from them, and the traffic is not oriented in that direction. It's appropriately designed, it's attractive, there have been changes made, and there may be a few changes as this project evolves too. But those, but generally speaking, you've got a very well-thought-out project here. It, you know, it has all the environmental qualifications of being a lead silver project. It's got a lot of tenant flexibility, because of the size of the floor plates. It's just, I mean, the parking garage is attractive, if you can say that about a parking garage. Most of them you can't. It has a lot of community benefits, which, as a planning commission, that's not your purview to look at particularly, but to keep in the back of your mind, maybe, that's up to the city council. But it produces some sales tax revenue, it's going to help the merchants downtown, it's going to do a lot of positive things for the community. Those are things to think about, in the bigger picture here. I think that this project is a very good example of how cities progress, how cities change. And change is an okay word, when you do it in the way that it's a fit for the community, when it's well-thought-out. So I would encourage you, as this project evolves, and you've got another official meeting on this, but I'd encourage you all to do your homework, and I know you will, because this is, this is one of the big projects in town, you're going to do a good job on this, I'm pretty sure. But as it involves, evolves, ask good questions, and I know you will. Make sure it is a good project, and I think it is, right now even, but you may make some tweaks to it, and that's okay. And then ultimately, recommend it to the city council, with your recommendation for approval, because I think it's a compliment to the community. Thank you.
Ms. Eaton, when you began, Ms. Eaton, when you began your comments, you said something about concerns, did I misunderstand you? Do you have any concerns about the project?
As I see it right now, I don't really have any concerns. I mean, I look at the height, but I understand the height. I think in order to have a good project, you have to have enough economics in the project to make it work. And this project, compared to others that we have in town, height-wise, the exception of a few feet, in an area where it's non-impactful directly on any other project, that's okay. I think that's, that's a judgment call, but in my call, it's okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I'm over a 10-year resident at San Carlos, I have two kids in the San Carlos school system. I also am a local medical and retail space owner on Laurel Street. I feel that this is a project that San Carlos really needs. There's no current office projects that I can think of in our city. Living here just for 10 years, but growing up in the Bay Area, I have seen San Carlos change, and I think, in order for a city to continue to expand, and also, the retail sector to grow in downtown, which I think is needed, we need jobs within the city. We have it, you know, in Redwood City, we see it in San Mateo. I do feel that this project is well-thought-out, will be a great addition to our city. I do know Windy Hill well, I've worked with them for, in the past, being in real estate as well, and I think they build very quality projects, I think they're very considerate to our city and our city's needs. I also think our education could really benefit, the SCFEF system could really benefit from the tax revenue that will be generated from this project. I know, working with my wife with SCFEF, and trying to raise the money every year, how hard it can be. I think our goal is here was, maybe 2.2 or 2.4 million. I think we're 400,000 short right now. And this, I think they said, was at 1.4 million of tax revenue, could really be beneficial to the school programs that could otherwise be cut, including our PE, which is incredibly important. And SCFEJ can continue to do, you know, and add support, but I do think this will be a wonderful addition to our city, and help San Carlos continue to flourish. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Angela Fragomene. And she even laid it out, I probably butchered it, sorry.
But he did worse than most, didn't he?
Yeah, probably.
He didn't put a T in it, so I'll give him credit for that. Put an imaginary T.
How do you pronounce it?
Fragomene.
Okay.
Just the way it's spelled, Fragomene.
You've got one minute now.
Don't hate on a hater. So, for or against, I'm not completely, you know, decided. It does, they have done a lot of studies, and some of them, especially with respect to the environmental packs, you know, pretty impressive from a standpoint of cleaning up the environment, which is really important, especially when you hear that they're taking off 20 gallons of oil a year out of that land. So, you know, with that said, there are some definite positives to it. But most of this, that I have to say, really impacts infrastructure. And infrastructure is a lot more than just traffic. Our traffic stinks, every single person in this room knows it, there is no getting around it. But the size of the project demands that no less than 1,500 cars will potentially be on the surface streets, or from 101, from neighborhoods, El Camino, those will go through the neighborhood, or down Holly. El Camino. Those will go through the neighborhood or down Holly. The facility, we know the size of it, you know, and potentially could have up to 200 square feet per person, which is a very generous, that's almost a size of a Google, square footage per person in an office building. The facility will have no less than 2,642 people at that rate. The gym and grocery store could potentially have a higher density, especially at peak hours back in the day when I worked out. You know, you'd wait for a machine because there were so many people at the gym. But with this way, there's, there's no way that at this square foot, at the cost of the square foot to the inhabitants or the residents of the facility, the user will not densify, you know, to something similar to 200 square feet per person. They're not going to be benching and playing ping pong and having K graders. You know, that's every startup's fantasy, and it's not a reality when they're spending the kind of money that they're investing into this building. It's going to be shown in the rent that these occupants pay. With current parking of 1,500 stalls, there's going to be no less than 1,000, 2,600, of course. There'll be no less than 1,132 people that would have to carpool, bike, or take public transportation, or they'll have to seek parking in the residential areas or industrial area surrounding the facility. The SEQA study that was done is easily skewed by the standards that they compare their results to. The only impact that matters really in the end is the lives of the residents on the east side of San Carlos and those who have to drive through Holly to the west side. The traffic pattern studies need to be done for several months, counting cars and evaluating by a third-party civil engineer. Not many of us in here are civil engineers and could actually understand or translate the SEQA results presented. The SEQA guidelines used are based on models and not reality. Another impact that needs to be taken into consideration is can EMS, especially fire, make it to a resident, to the new hospital proposed, or the office buildings, freeway or businesses that require, in the required time, I think it's around four minutes, and that's from Station 13. Excuse me, lost my spot. Traffic congestion currently does not even allow for this. It takes an average of 15 to 20 minutes, especially in evening hours, to get from Holly Street, Holly exit, to Old County Road. The SEQA analysis shows that there is no impact on delays because the delays are already at a D or an E average. They don't get much worse. I think F is the worst. Excuse me. Other, major infrastructure impacts are obviously water usage, storm drains, and sewer usage, sewer flow onto city pipes. The city has already approved a hospital, a hotel, and about 300 condos, a transit village. When these projects are taken into consideration individually, the impacts might not seem, might seem minimal. Collectively, there will be a major impacts. Also, hard services, which are buildings and pavements, are being added and reducing the earth's natural absorption of water, and the water is pushed out and has to go somewhere. Neighborhoods on the east side already flood with the new hardscapes being built, like the Orchard Supply and the PAM doctor's office that are already there will with a runoff go. East Palo Alto, last Friday, denied a permit for a building of a much-needed school that, for low-income students, due to drought, local water shortage. They denied the permit.
No. No, please.
I just have a couple more things. Finally, the last impact really I wanted to talk about was just CO2. CO2 emissions, one of the highest pollutants in neighborhoods, CO2. CO2 comes from humans. That is the number-one impact of smog, our breathing. CO2 human from humans. Also, contributing factors will be the emissions from obviously vehicles, trucks, and air conditioning units and generators. With the hospital, the hotel, the condo complex, Orchard Supply, delivery and generators, and also the Amazon-proposed building, they're going to bring in a lot more CO2. That, so the question really comes down to, will our tax, our infrastructures with the water, the sewage, the CO2, how will they affect us collectively, impact our environmental and where the residents live? I just want to make sure that basically, you know, all the infrastructure stuff is looked at. That's really what I'm trying to get down to. It's not necessarily whether the building goes up, but there's a lot of other impacts due to all of the projects that are going on.
Great, thank you. Steve Zarelli.
Steve Zarelli, I was born and raised in San Carlos. I've been a current owner in San Carlos for 13 years. My family owns a couple businesses in San Carlos. I do know Windy Hill. I've worked with them before. I can say that they are very good developers, good owners. They're very giving to the community. They've been very generous with SCHEF. As Adam had mentioned, I'm also a donor of SCHEF, and I know that they've gone above and beyond in regards to that foundation. I think if you look at this project, as a whole for San Carlos, I think it'd be hard to argue that this is not a beneficial project for the greater good of the city. Thank you.
You. Sam Hersberg.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Sam Hersberg, 19-year resident and former member of the greater East San Carlos neighborhood. I understand the need to clean up this property because of the pollution issues there and the need to build a sizable development, including in height, in order to build a, a good project. I think traffic is one of the bigger issues associated with this project. I'm really glad to see the east side connect improvements and the other improvements that are identified. I think those will go a long way to getting people walking to transit and walking to downtown, back and forth. I have a few other suggestions to make. This is the time of year I always ride my bike, start riding my bicycle to work in Redwood City, because my daughter is out of school. So then you really, really start seeing what's on the roadways, both on industrial and on Old County Road. And one thing about the east side is we really do have a lot of trash that emanates kind of to these roadways and broken glass, nails, pieces of metal. Every year, I find myself calling the city and suggesting street sweeping take place. And I do hear quite frequently, we don't have money to do street sweeping throughout the year. When I previously met with Michael, I had raised this issue, the suggestion of maybe a, some kind of an endowment to help maintain these two streets, which are very, very important for, for the businesses and people getting in and out of San Carlos. I know just after I complained to the city last year, I got a flat tire from a nail on Old County Road. So it's, it's real. There's, there's some trash that comes out from those roads. And if this project can help with that, that would be helpful, as well as any maintenance of vegetation and trees associated with the east side connect project. One thing that we, that's still going to be an ongoing issue in the city is the need for a northbound ramp. And I would encourage some of the money from the development agreement be identified towards looking at a study for Harbor in particular, working with the city of Belmont and San Mateo County on the east side of 101, the airport area, to identify a northbound ramp, because I think it's going to be needed as we continue to see these types of changes on the east side. Just a comment on the Transportation Commission comments about a shuttle. I think a shuttle's a good idea. I'd just like to make sure if a shuttle ran from this particular development, that it went to the El Camino Transit Village side and not on the Old County roadside. And just another final suggestion, if we're looking for ways to improve bicycle and pedestrian, is East San Carlos, which was improved as part of east side connect, does some have some outstanding issues associated with still correcting some of the pedestrian bicycle improvements that were made and some developments that were allowed to encroach into the right-of-way. And as that roadway gets more and more congested and there's more and more bikes and pedestrians, I'd like to see that roadway widened and the sidewalks and the bike lanes improved accordingly. Thank you very much for the ability to comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Michael Frost.
Thank you very much for hearing me out. Immersion 25 is a very interesting project, and I think it would be a net add and a benefit to the city of San Carlos. I've lived here for five years, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. And one thing that really stands out to me is the financial benefit to the city and the community. That cannot be denied. The mitigation, the environmental impact, that cannot be denied. Through the design, it looks like a lot of thought has gone into this, multiple meetings, redesigns, those are not insignificant at all. The trees, the local trees, the native landscaping, the trees up on the top of the building, on top of the parking garage, those are, those are very interesting design features. You know, while we're, while I'm talking about the environment, I wanted to talk a little bit about maybe using this development as an example for future developments in the 101 corridor, specifically in San Carlos. You know, utilization of permeable paving, green roofs, gray water systems, these sort of things, maybe able to impact the hospital, the other residential developments that really set the example moving forward. We're entering a time where EPA cannot build any more buildings because they have no water. You know, we cannot make the assumption that we have unlimited amounts of water. This is, that's an erroneous assumption from the 19th to 20th centuries that no longer applies to the 21st century. So I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to, within this general design, to really push a little bit harder and maybe push the bar higher than lead silver, maybe gold or platinum, and maybe go above and beyond what we'd even thought about, what was, what was possible. And I think with, we in San Carlos could really set an example for the rest of the, of the region. To sum this up, I think this is a great development for the community as it sits today. And I think it could be improved slightly by raising the bar a little bit higher with lead and taking a hard look at water efficiency, specifically green roofs, permeable paving, gray water systems.
Great, thank you. I don't have a speaker. Dimitri, are you going to speak?
Yeah. Hi.
How are you?
I'm doing fine. Yeah, so this, it's a big project, and, and it does need some serious deliberation. It needs to be looked at. I think there have been some changes from the initial design. I don't think enough has been done yet. So a couple of things that I want to point out is, height is an issue. It's just a few blocks away from a residential neighborhood. And what we're deeply concerned about is having a building that's 100 feet tall when you include the mechanicals. It sets a precedent for other properties that are adjacent to our neighborhood. And once you have one, one project that is as tall as that, how do you, how do you stop other ones? Because that's typically what happens. Well, this one's 100 feet. We should be able to go 125. So we're concerned about a wall that's going to surround our community, because we do not see a comprehensive plan that takes into account our community, our residential community. And we don't have like a plan for tiering from, to move from heights. There are many things that need to be done, that need to be done in conjunction with community input. And frankly, the city isn't doing enough there. If we did that, we would reduce friction in, in developments and would have a win-win for everyone. And that's something that I'd like to see happen. So precedent is, is very concerning. There are no mitigations for the residential community as it stands. We specifically asked for something like either cul-de-sacs, speed bumps, bulbous, trees being planted, other types of guaranteed mitigations for the community. We don't have those, and we're very concerned about that. Why? Well, car commuters, train commuters, they're going to use our residential streets to drive, park, walk, and bike through the neighborhood. The traffic study didn't look at any of those impacts. If you look at the traffic study, none of the intersections that, that were, our residential streets were studied. So I'm concerned about that. There are 4,653 total auto trips projected for this project. Right? We can get, we can talk about, you know, models and whether or not too much was subtracted and, you know, the impact is lower because of that. But, you know, the bottom line is 4,653 total trips per day. That's quite a bit. And the current use generated through some, some type of model is subtracting over, over half, 2,389 trips from the impact. That somehow isn't passing the smell test for me, frankly. And I'm perfectly fine if we actually look at what the real impacts are and then figure out what the real mitigations need to be. And then I think, I think we can have a rational and good conversation about that. The other thing is, is it's kind of unfortunate, because this project, it's, it's the cumulative impacts, not just from this project. I think there's some positives about it. But we have this project, the hotel, OSH Hardware, the Transit Village, the current PAM facility, PAM Hospital is going to be built, and Amazon Delivery Service, plus other projects impacting our streets, impacting our neighborhood, and impacting our families. So we want to continue to be a residential neighborhood. We don't want to be destroyed by overdevelopment or development that isn't thought, thoughtfully done. And what I'm seeing are piecemeal projects, you know, parcel here, parcel here, parcel here, parcel here, parcel here. And we don't have a good sort of overall holistic view of how to develop on the east side and still keep the existing residential community intact. A couple of other things, and I'll wrap up. I like the idea of, you know, trying to get bikes to commute, but where is the coordination with the, the proposed multimodal transit center and to have bike lanes along there? Because then people could be off of the, the streets, El Camino, because what they're going to do is they're going to cut through our residential streets to get, get to the, get to the project. No matter how many bike lanes you have, I, as a bicyclist, am going to avoid streets that have 35 mile an hour and high traffic. I'm going to go through places where there are fewer cars to keep myself safe. So that, that's what I'm concerned about is, or those, that spillover. So the other, the other thing is that the improvements that are being considered as, you know, neighborhood improvements really are along a commercial street, which is very far south of the residential area. There's nothing that I see being done for Branston, which is the street that's closest to the train station. I'd like to see sidewalks, bike lanes, things like that along Branston, because I predict that we will have a significant impact to, to the residential community. And it's, it's, it's been occurring. We get more and more traffic every day. People put out the signs with the kids and put them out into the middle of the street to try to, to try to keep the neighborhood more safe. So please keep that in consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Dimitri. I don't have any more speaker cards. Anyone else? Okay. Does anybody have any specific questions now for staff, applicant? You want to start with staff, or you want to start with the applicant? You want to start with the traffic? What do you want to start with?
Well, I have sort of a, a big-scale question that might help narrow down some other questions. So if you don't mind, I can start with that. And perhaps this question is best for the applicant. So 528 out, the 1,600 potential new jobs, which was in the staff report for economic benefit. And then one of our public speakers had mentioned, forgive me, I want to say 2,600 people. And so I guess my question is, how many people do you envision? How many tenants do you envision? How many employees do you envision in this site? Why this size site?
So there, there's no question that when you look in, in the majority of the office inventory in the city of San Carlos, that occupancy rates are quite high. And that's because the types of square footage and types of businesses that you're leasing to from, as it relates to office space. So what I mean by that is in downtown San Mateo, in 3,000 square feet, a technology startup company is going to be very dense. They're going to have, it's reminiscent of sweatshop conditions to me when I go into some of their spaces. We aren't attracting those tenants. Those aren't the tenants we're looking for. So the building systems wouldn't allow to have 2,600 people in this project. The air conditioning systems couldn't sustain the cooling necessary for people to breathe, to use their computers, which generate a tremendous amount of heat and everything else. So we, these aren't designed for that sort of density. Okay, the restrooms, we don't have enough restrooms to support that kind of density. Now, people occupy space differently than they used to. So for many of you who've been around longer than I, Cisco, for example, used to have cube farms. They would, you know, you'd go into a floor and there would be lots of eight by eights or eight by six cubes. And, and then some private offices. Now, private offices are passe. There's very few in, on floors. And how people will occupy is they'll be much denser in certain areas, still not to the density that, that was mentioned. But then there will be conference rooms, breakout rooms, phone, private phone rooms, you know, large break areas where people can kind of go and congregate with beanbag. You know, there's all sorts of things that tenants do. So pound for pound, per square foot, we aren't occupying any denser in this sort of a product than Cisco did back in the 90s. Anyway.
So you would, you would say 1,600?
Staff report is accurate for what we expect as far as the occupancy goes.
So would you be willing to have an 800-person limit on occupancy of the buildings?
No.
Why not?
Because it's a 100-year project. I mean, you know, these buildings are, we don't know. So the, you know, the reason the TDM, Scott, has flexibility in it is because we don't know what 25 years brings. We don't know what 35 years brings. And so we're trying to design and implement a project that we know will be successful today and in the future. That's in both of our interests. By putting arbitrary limitations that we don't know the full impact of through the lifespan of this project, that's not something any developer is going to agree to.
The problem with that is that if you sell it the day after you build it, the next developer could come in and have 3,000 people in these same buildings.
Okay, so I'll give you one example. No, no, you brought the point. Let me give you another example. We reduced the size of the roof screen on this project to the minimal size allowable to provide air conditioning systems to support the occupants.
So.
There is no further room to add air conditioning to service those sorts of occupancy loads.
So you're saying.
So how much occupancy load could the air conditioning system accommodate?
I would have to ask our air conditioning consultant, but it's designed for the sort of occupancy that staff suggested would occupy the project.
If you could get back to me with a more specific number, that would be great for the junk, for the public hearing.
Absolutely. Someone taking notes?
I think, yeah. Don't worry. I think here.
Okay.
Somebody's taking notes.
I'm covered.
I have a question. I think it's more towards staff than, you know, when the people mention CO2, and I'm thinking of Senate Bill 375 and greenhouse gas reduction. How does this play into whatever requirements are towards Senate Bill 375? I mean, is that, is that handled by making this close to transit, within a mile of transit? Is that how it fits into the AVAG goal?
Rebecca Ald, environmental consultant again. So to answer your question, the city of San Carlos has adopted a climate action plan to address Senate Bill 375. This project is consistent with that climate action plan. The mitigated negative declaration goes through the elements on pages, on page 31 of the ways that it is consistent with that plan. It includes energy use reduction measures, transportation and land use reduction measures, and solid waste reduction measures to, to meet the requirements of 375, consistent with the city's climate action plan.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question tagging on to that? So based on the greenhouse gas emissions, the population of the project is 2,700 people.
We did use modeling defaults for a conservative analysis.
Anyone else?
Sure. I'd be interested in hearing what the applicant has to say about some of those water conservation measures that a member of the public referenced. They sounded pretty good to me.
Yes. So to juxtapose what we're proposing with existing first. So the existing project has no mitigation measures as it relates to irrigation today. Now, the, so I hope to have you more exact numbers for our next meeting, but essentially, you know, this project by achieving lead silver, for example, we can have zero stormwater runoff. All stormwater has to be retained on-site. Okay? Today, there is no retention. So the entire site, which is all asphalt, our site is three and a half acres of permeable surface, which will be a stark contrast from what's there today. So not only is there more permeable surface, not only do we have to retain the stormwater on-site, but then it'll also get you water usage calcs. I can tell you right now that I think there's somewhere in the range of like 60 or 70 toilets on the site right now, because each one of these suites has restrooms. And none of those are low-flow, no fixtures are low-flow. So we expect to, to be able to show categorically that the new project, although larger in scale, will certainly, because we're not allowed to have any stormwater runoff with Cal Green, will have more permeable surface, and will also be able to show a reduction in water usage. Does that answer the question?
It does, although what I would say is when you come back, I mean, I think that he suggested some specific additional mitigations that would potentially reduce the amount of water use. So recognizing that you might already improve water usage, maybe you could improve it a little bit more utilizing some of those ideas. In the same vein, and I think I know what the answer is going to be, did you consider reducing CO2 by generating some of your own electricity?
So the parking garage will be built in such a way that solar panels could go on the top of the garage.
But you didn't put them on because you wanted to reduce the, the visibility of the garage?
No, actually. Although that would be a great reason not to put them on. But the reason that we elected not to put them on is because we don't know what tenants are going to want yet. And so some tenants may feel really strongly about, so ultimately, the tenants are who pay the utility bills. So we design a building in such a way that it can be as economical as possible to function. And then a tenant may come in and say, you know, we want to do some additional things so that we can continue to increase the economic benefit to the, to the, to the tenant, i.e. solar panels. So what we do is we build the infrastructure. So the garage needs to be able to hold the weight, the wind load. We have to have conduits to support solar. But we, it's not something we would typically elect to do, no.
What if we asked you to do it?
Then that would be a conversation we'd have to have.
I mean, I'd be interested to see whether you could come up with some ideas to reduce the CO2 from your building by generating some of your own energy.
Okay.
Since you're up here. I have a question about your TDM and particularly about the parking. So it's about 1,510 stalls?
That's right.
Do I have that right? I noticed that in the TDM plan, one of the things at the very end that, that says could be, I guess, additional options, should you not meet the TDM goals? I guess is, is how I'm reading this, is employee parking fees? And, and that would be my question. I'm just, I'm curious. Would you charge for parking to discourage employees from driving? That seems like the easiest way to prevent people from parking in the garage.
Yeah, so, you know, it would be, it would not be something that we would be looking to do because it impacts the individual employee. What we're really trying to do is benefit the individual employee at first. So free train passes, make them aware of their rights under the TDM program, allow them to have the benefits by restricting their employer to comply by the TDM program. Then what the TDM program provides for is that if, if beyond our reasonable estimates, we're not able to achieve the required reduction, that these additional measures could be put in place in order to get to that. So essentially, we're at a point where we're saying, hey, yes, we tried to benefit the employees as much as we can, but now we're not meeting our need, and so there are other measures that we now need to take into account.
And I guess, it seems to me with a 20% reduction, it almost seems like the facility's overparked. Am I doing the math wrong? It seems like there are way too many parking spaces if, if they're really going to generate that kind of trip reduction. Am I, I mean, I was on the math team in high school, but I could be doing my math wrong. So.
Why don't I, can I lobby that to city staff? I mean, 1,510 stalls is what your zoning requires I provide.
Okay. Thank you.
You're doing the math right.
Okay, thank you. It's been a while now. I have to count on my fingers. Use it or lose it, kids. So I guess I'm, I'm having trouble wrapping my brain around 1,500 cars on the streets and, and admittedly on the Holly interchange, and I'm just going to need to work through that, that difficulty, just so that we know that that conversation is coming up.
May I mention one thing about that?
Yeah, please.
So I agree that there are going to be traffic impacts associated with this project. Right? Now, does Sequo classify them as impacts? I'm not a Sequo consultant, and apparently the answer to that question is no. So what we've done is we've tried to do all that we can do through the TDM program, through the way we've designed the, the project, to make sure, and through the public benefits, to make sure that we mitigate those impacts as much as possible. So I have met a lot with folks who are going to be impacted by this project in an effort to try and make sure I understood what their, what they felt were the things that they wanted to see done to help mitigate some of the issues. And so, you know, at the end of the day, I can kind of, you know, do my best to do that. I think that you cannot ignore that the, the existing project does generate something. And so, yes, there's 1,510 parking stalls being built, but there's something there. There's 132,000 feet of industrial that's very densely occupied and has a lot of trips generated because of the types of businesses. There's a lot of service businesses there that are, where they have guys going on calls and coming back all day long, whereas typically, you know, employees, they come and they work and then they go home. So I think that the 1,500 number keeps getting thrown out. There, there is something there today. There's something there. Now, how much of it you want to count, as Scott has mentioned, is, is up to the experts.
So as far as improvements, someone raised an issue of improvements on Branston. And my understanding is the reason why you chose Commercial was because of the connection to Arroyo? Is that right?
Well, there's two reasons. One is, so if you go walk those streets, Branston already has quite a few tree bulb-outs and other improvements that have been implemented on that street. The reason that they weren't successful in doing what we're trying to do, which is create a consistent path of travel for pedestrians and bicyclists, is because of the uses that currently reside there. For example, the concrete plant. There's no way to safely provide a path of travel through that area in any way that would be acceptable to, to a pedestrian. So, you know, you have basically almost, you know, I think 25% of the street has an entire curb cut with concrete trucks coming in and out. In addition to that, there's the rail spur. We're able to terminate the rail spur at Commercial Street. If you've ever ridden a bike over a rail spur, you want that spur out of the street. On, on Branston, I don't know if that's practical. So we did look at both streets. Branston just isn't, we, we weren't able to see a way to do it, to create that consistent path of travel in a safe way.
So can I stay on that question for a second? Can you throw up a picture, a map of the neighborhood on the east side?
Let's see, of the residential neighborhood?
Of just your project and?
Yeah, of course I can.
Oh, go back one.
Oh, well, I don't know if that's the map I like.
Okay, that's, that's a perfect one. Okay, so your plan is to use Commercial Street and Branston?
And right now, there's a, there's a rapid, or there's a crosswalk there, and that crosswalk will be upgraded with rapid LED flashers for pedestrian safety.
Okay, but that's a really busy street.
That's the need for the rapid LED flashers.
And there's a light at Branston?
That's correct.
Okay, which will actually stop traffic as opposed to the LED lights, which may or may not. So the issue I have here is that based on the location of the buildings, people are not going to walk south to Commercial and then use Commercial Street in order to go underneath the tracks or along Old County to get to Caltrain. They're going to walk north to Branston. They're going to cross at Branston. They're going to walk up Industrial Road, and they're going to walk through the residential neighborhoods. And there's, there's nothing in the plan that mitigates that. And that will probably be the predominant path to get to Caltrain.
So there's, there's, there's $3.6 million in the plan, including another $1,007,000 of traffic impact fees to help mitigate all sorts of things. So when you say there's nothing in the plan to mitigate that, there's $3.8 million of direct community benefit and an additional $4.4 million of fees that the city could use or allocate at their discretion to do anything. That, it's not my money at that point, it's the city's. So I understand that, but if you go walk Branston, you'll see what I'm talking about.
I walked Branston.
You're in the neighborhood.
I walked Commercial.
So with the concrete trucks on that street, do you think you as a pedestrian could have a safe path of travel?
I'm not. I'm just pointing out the fact that the way it's set up right now is you're trying to drive people to Commercial. And that's a great alternative for them to get to downtown, but it's a lousy alternative for them to get to Transit.
What about Wayfair signs?
What?
What about Wayfair signs? I mean, that's just an idea.
People are, it, it's the same concept that happened when Sam Trans or the Transit Village came to us and said, yes, people will park further away and pay for it rather than pay in the, rather than park in the neighborhood for free. Okay? So we had to have.
Scott, I mean, do you have, I'm, yeah, do you have an alternative suggestion? Because, I mean, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Is there an alternative? Like, can we steer them down Terminal Way or?
Well, one concept that has been talked about in the neighborhood is to block off the ends of the residential streets there and to push everybody on Terminal Way or East San Carlos.
The developer can't block off the residential streets.
I understand, I understand. But, you know, we can make suggestions to the city on what needs to be done.
I'm just thinking, you know, I hear what you're saying. I don't know, it seems odd that folks would walk that length of, of Industrial to get to Hall. And I just wonder if there's like anything that we could do to steer them earlier. They would probably do it.
The, the attempt, and I'd give them credit for the attempt, is to send them down Commercial. The reality is, though, that people are not going to go south in order to go north and get to Transit. When people walk to Transit, they get there as quickly as possible. They're worried about whether they're going to make the train. They're rushing to get to the train.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I'm just, I was wondering whether you had any thoughts about what to do.
I think Terminal is an alternative. East San Carlos is a lousy street. It, it really has been damaged by the East Side Connect project as far as car traffic, as far as pedestrian traffic. It's kind of okay for bikes, but it really was, was a mistake.
Well, I mean, based on your point, and I think it's well-taken, they're not going to walk all the way down to East San Carlos Avenue on Industrial. They'll turn on Hall or Cherry.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, maybe the applicant can noodle it and, you know, think of a way to, you know, steer people down, you know, Terminal or, I mean, does. Well, I mean, based on your point, and I think it's well-taken, they're not going to walk all the way down to East San Carlos Avenue on Industrial. They'll turn on Hall or Cherry.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, maybe the applicant can noodle it and think of a way to, you know, steer people down, you know, Terminal or, I mean, I'm not terribly familiar with Tankledge. Is that an option?
Tankledge doesn't go through.
It doesn't look like it does. I've never, I don't think I've ever been on Tankledge, so.
Yeah, it curves around onto Terminal.
Okay.
The Arroyo underpass is obviously a significant benefit of Commercial Street as well as getting people direct into downtown.
Yeah, but I think what Scott's point is, and it's a decent one, is that, I mean, there's two things. One is if you have a choice of walking, you know, down Industrial to Hall and then Hall to get to the Caltrain station. Absolutely, people will totally take Commercial to get to downtown San Carlos. And I don't think walking a block is going to be an impediment, but if they are trying to get to the Caltrain station, I think he does have a point there. So maybe something to noodle.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to the conversation a little bit. Generally, when in urban planning, what we see is that people will walk the path of travel that's safest and most enjoyable to walk. And I think to go to Mr. Field's point, those are heavy-duty industrial uses along Branston. The other thing to consider here, and when Public Works and Community Development looked at this path of travel, one of the other things that we considered is the future. And what we know now is that L3 Communications is eventually going to go to, most likely go to some kind of a redevelopment project, and that's about nine acres. Also, the Kellymore site, we foresee that changing over in the next, you know, five or 10 years as well. So you have a very, very significant amount of acreage there that will be turning over to most likely some other use, like a knowledge-based business like this. And so if that's the case, we wanted to concentrate on an arterial that has the bones for a much better pedestrian and bike experience than some of the other industrial roads. And this whole area is going to change, transform into a completely different land uses over the, in the next five to 10 years. So that's another reason that we're looking at the future, and we are trying to get people to go down Commercial Street as opposed to these other places and up Old County Road because of the East Side Connect project. That's another reason is it's a lot better, I think, as you can see. In some of these other streets, you have utility poles right in the middle of the sidewalk, and you can't, you know, it's hard to walk down those sidewalks. And we removed those along Old County Road, and it's a much better pedestrian experience. Maybe it's not perfect or not as good as it could be, but it's a lot better than it was before. So those are some of the other considerations that we looked at when we suggested that Commercial Street be the street that is improved.
Al, can I ask a question? Did staff look at the possibility of cul-de-sacking Cherry, Hall, Montgomery? I have no idea what would go into something like that, so I'm wondering what you guys looked at.
You know, that has been discussed over the years, and it's certainly been brought up by the greater East San Carlos neighborhood. And, you know, it hasn't been studied in great detail at this time. It's not something that has been put forward as a, you know, a funded capital improvement project, but it's certainly on people's minds. If you were to do that, and we do have a traffic engineer here, it would have pretty significant impacts for traffic in that area because then the traffic would have to go elsewhere. But, so, you know, that may be okay, but it's not something that's ready to be studied or funded for study at this time.
Right, I mean, I can imagine it. I'm not even saying suggesting it. It could be very inconvenient for the neighbors as well. I was just wondering if there had been any study of it since it was brought up. Okay.
So Mr. Crab raised the issue of housing, and I am not asking for an opinion of the city attorney this evening, but I am assuming that when the city attorney does render an opinion, the city attorney might indicate that what Mr. Crab is suggesting is not legal, but I would be interested in knowing the answer. It sounds like what he is suggesting is something equivalent of a housing impact fee, which presumably San Carlos has either actively decided not to have or passively decided not to have. And I assume the planning commission can't by fiat work around the lack of a housing impact fee, but I'll take my answer later.
You're just putting it out there.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Silverman. Yeah, we'll look at that for the next hearing.
Thanks.
I have another question about, I guess, maybe traffic fees or, I guess, a project like this, how does a project like this contribute to improvements beyond our city, like the Holly interchange, like studying a northbound freeway entrance on Harbor? How does a project like this contribute to that?
So there was a study that was done, actually, as part of the general plan, environmental impact report and traffic study, and so the city said, okay, where are the key points of traffic problems? And we call them choke points sometimes, like Holly, Britton Avenue in some locations. And so there was a number of areas that were identified that, where projects were identified to improve traffic circulation in San Carlos. Holly Street interchange is one of them. Again, Britton Avenue is another, and there's a couple more. And so the city identified these areas, saying that, and modeling looked at, well, how could these areas be improved and what kinds of improvements do we need to make? And so that has actually been determined that we need to improve the Holly interchange because that's a problem, and we can improve it. Britton Avenue can be improved with turning movements and widen, you know, right turns, dedicated right turns and things like that. So those projects were identified and costs were identified as well. So then they identified the project, they said, well, here's how much it's going to cost, and then a formula was created to determine a fair share for each new development project that contributes above a certain threshold. And so each of these projects that we see, we measure the threshold, and I'm not exactly sure of that number, but if it exceeds a certain threshold, then they are required to pay into their fair share based on a formula to contribute to these known traffic improvement projects in the city. And this is one of them.
And this does meet the threshold?
Yes.
Okay. Is that a, could I look somewhere for the number of how much it's going to contribute?
I think it's $4 million, is that what you said? Or?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's the exact number.
Yeah, take your time.
But we can certainly provide that information.
Thank you very much.
Since we have the consultants, are there any other questions for the consultants?
Yeah, you know, Height and Mass was brought up by some of the members of the community, and when we had met, you had showed me a model of what the building would look like from the neighborhood, and I'm wondering if you have that available for us to see tonight?
Yes, but I, how do I access that on a computer? You? She wants us to, yeah, there's a slide.
There's a.
You haven't even asked any three questions.
Okay, I've got eight pages of questions.
Oh, you're letting me go first. You're so sweet.
Still?
Yep.
You say 80 pages?
She said eight pages.
Eight pages of questions.
Can you just submit them into the record, please?
I didn't knock a single one off your list. I feel like I've been talking the whole time.
And can you orient me on what streets I'm looking?
Yeah, so you're looking down Industrial. And so what we did as part of our -- pardon me.
I'm sorry, Industrial and?
Hall, I believe.
Okay.
I'd have to see, someone familiar with the neighborhood would know exactly where you're at. Where's that building? Maybe someone would know, but, thank you. So we went ahead as part of our early outreach with the GESC board to, and took photographs throughout the neighborhood to make sure that the projects, the project, excuse me, was not visible from the residential areas. And so we did that and achieved that and have the pictures to show that. And so what we also did is folks, community stakeholders were interested in, hey, what's this going to look like as I go down Industrial? And so we create, so we went ahead and took a photo and superimposed the building. Now, you had asked for me to get it colored, and I'm working on that. Just so you see not just the white massing, but you actually see the building itself, which would obviously look more pleasing than a white massing. But that's what it's going to look like. The updated slide shows what it's going to look like from Industrial.
From Industrial, but you have also done photos, and you don't need to show them, that show that you do not see it from the neighborhood, am I correct?
That's right, absolutely. And, go ahead.
Did you check any of the second-floor houses in the neighborhood?
So there's, yeah, there's one second-floor house that's directly on Industrial, but the rest of the homes, because they abut, so typical one-story industrial buildings are much taller than a one-story home. Typical one-story industrial buildings are almost as tall as a two-story home. So because the industrial backs up literally to the majority of these homes, the view corridor, it does not allow you to see this project. And so what we did with the GESC is we gave them a map of their neighborhood. We said, you mark an X anywhere you want us to go do this same process, and, you know, that's what we did.
And did you look at any second-story residential houses?
Yes. And we met with the representatives of the east side and asked them if they would like additional views made, and no requests were made.
Okay. It's interesting because sitting in a single-family story house, I can see over the industrial buildings and easily see the concrete plant building for probably a half to two-thirds of the tower that's sitting there. And my guess is that that's not 100 feet tall.
And this same invitation was made to Patty Masters, and she declined to have us do this for your home, but we would have been more than happy to, and in fact, I'm more than happy to send a photographer out tomorrow.
I wasn't talking my home. I was talking second stories. I figured the first, the single-story homes are not the homes that I would worry about. It's people who have gone and remodeled recently and now have second stories, and now they're going to be able to see this through their windows.
If there's anyone in the east side community who's watching who would like us to go take a photo and do the same, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Mike, do you have a slide that you could show right now?
Oh, yeah, I've got lots of them.
Well, but note that because they're not part of the main population, so if you just go back and do the same thing, I think there's four or five of them right there. See them right below that slide?
View three.
Yeah, so unfortunately, excuse me, unfortunately, the map, because I wasn't, because these are part of an old presentation, there's a master map that shows where each view was taken, and that map's not in here, so you're not going to get that context. So here's what this shows. That's my architect in the car sitting there, incidentally. So what this shows is from your backyard, the buildings are impossible to see because of what's behind you. So we went out to the middle of the street where the buildings could potentially be visible, and as you can see, because of the roof lines, they're not visible. And so there's, 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 there's.
There's a few more.
So that, you see, that is the back of an industrial building, that big concrete building. That's classified as a single-story industrial building. And so there's a large part of this street where the entire street has, you know, large industrial buildings backing up to the backyards. The before and afters are the old design and the new design.
Another issue that was raised was the issue of precedent, and that somehow if we were to allow this building at this height, that we would be somehow constrained either legally or rhetorically in our ability to prevent other-sized buildings. I don't believe that's the case. I don't need an answer right now, but I would be interested in hearing either staff or city attorney's view, maybe at the next meeting, as to whether or not approving this at this height would in any way constrain future planning commissions or the city council.
Well, I have the answer now, actually, because I've answered this question probably 100 times at various planning commission meetings. There is no precedent in planning. Every project stands on its own. You have to make the findings for each project. Each project is unique, has to be conditioned differently. Each project has a different impact. So there's no precedent. There's no legal right to a precedent, and the next project that comes down the road can't point to this one and say, aha, you gave that, because there's no right to any individual project. So what we're guided by is the zoning and the policy direction that the planning commission and the city council might give. So would this project, you know, rhetorically, would people try and use that? I've heard that, too, but it's not legally binding on anyone or the city.
I suppose that, I mean, for example, here, we could say, well, this project can't be seen at all from the neighborhood. If the next project is seen by the neighborhood, that would be reason alone to treat it differently, I suppose.
Absolutely, that would be one factor that the planning commission and the city council could look at to condition or to deny.
So Al, Dmitry asked a question about tiering away, buildings away from the neighborhood. Is there any plan from city staff to look at that?
That was already looked at as part of the 2011 zoning code. So buildings do, are required to be tiered away from, at the edges of the GESC neighborhood.
Yeah, but that's like, within 30 feet of a residential neighborhood, it can't be more than 40 feet tall or something like that.
Yes.
But there's no attempt to tier things as a whole away from residential neighborhoods.
When the general plan came through, when the zoning came through, there was a good deal of discussion about height and how it relates to the GESC, and the determination at that time was to tier the buildings directly adjacent to the neighborhood in a way and not to affect heights in the industrial zones, you know, across the street, for instance. So it was left at 50 feet over there.
Do you have any more slides, Mike?
No, but I do have the fees that you wanted.
Oh, thank you.
So, and I'll let city staff correct me in the next meeting if any of these are wrong, but I think they're right. Sewer fee is $810,000. Traffic impact fee is approximately $1.7 million. Grading permit fees are approximately $1 million. School impact fee, well, building permit fees of $300,000, new construction fee of $190,000, building plan check fee of $208,000. School impact fee of, I think, a couple hundred thousand, and then there's more.
So, I'm sorry, you said 1.7 for the traffic fee?
Yeah, yes, traffic impact fees.
Impact fee, okay.
Someone had mentioned no improvements, there weren't any improvements for the neighborhood, and I believe that when we met, that there was discussion that there's discretionary. Could you speak to the funding for neighborhood improvement?
Yes, so the final category in the development agreement provides $750,000 as a maintenance and recreation fund. And that has a list of things that it can be spent on, including cul-de-sacking, bulb outs. So, you know, some of these things that were talked about tonight are things that I've obviously already heard. And so, and city staffers, et cetera. So there are some dollars that are at the discretion of the city, and there's a category which defines generally what those dollars can be spent on in the development agreement, and it includes some of the things that were talked about.
It was part of Attachment Four that broke most of everything down, so it's in our staff report, Attachment Four. staff report, Attachment Four.
So, so is it Scott's turn?
Let's just get to Scott. Scott, I can't limit, I can't limit your discussion, but...
I just have one more quick, quick thing. One of our public speakers also mentioned the overall infrastructure, and I guess I just wanted to ask staff, does Public Works go through some sort of assessment to look at how we're going to supply basic services, sewage? I assume PG&E looks at electricity, fire, and so on. Is that, that's part of their process? Am I wrong?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's it?
Okay, Michael, I got lots of questions, but...
Be nice to me.
Don't get defensive. I'm not, I'm asking the questions. I'm just asking the questions. Some of them come from people in the neighborhood, some of them are my own. Some are for you, some are for staff. So according to the general plan, there's a limit on the increase in office space till 2030 of 5,700, 572,000 square feet, okay? So my first question is, how much has been approved up until now as part of the general plan?
Where does it say that there's a limit on office space in the general plan?
The, if you look at page 53, Table 3.4, says existing conditions, general plan 2030, percent change 2008 to 2030. This, you subtract those two numbers, it's a 39% increase in office space, and that number is 5,700, 572,000 square feet of office space that can be built under the general plan in the table.
In the general plan, it says that?
In the general plan, it says that.
We'll have to get back to you at the next meeting. Yeah, because that's not the intent of the general plan. In fact, the...
But it's in the general plan. Whether the intent was, it has limits on the amount of commercial space, the amount of industrial space, and the amount of office space that can be built in the city under the general plan till the year 2030.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take a look at that.
So my concern there is that if we build this, we may not allow to build, may not allow to be, to build any additional office space in the city until we either update the general plan or we wait till 2030.
The general plan can be amended. In fact, the city council has just funded a comprehensive review of the traffic and circulation element and the traffic component of the general plan, EIR, to look at this very issue.
Okay. So you may want to include...
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
...office in there, because my question is, have we already gone over the difference between this project and what's allowed in the general plan that would impact this particular project here?
Yeah.
Should it...
We'll take a look.
Should it progress forward through the city council? So there's a 50-foot height limit in the general commercial industrial area where this project is located. So when people say it's a few feet taller than what's allowed, in theory, what's allowed is 50 feet, and this is actually a doubling of that, okay? Comparable to somebody who lives in a residential zone and the height limit is 28 feet and building a 56-foot-high, build a residential house right next door to a single-family home. So I think that's something that we really need to think about, and we need to think about how this fits in and whether we want to go to 100 feet here or not. And so my question out of this is, how many projects in the last 20 years have exceeded the height limit and roughly by how much? So my guess is that most of the projects in this city in the last 20 or 30 years have exceeded the height limit by five, maybe 10%. This is 100% increase. And I just want us to realize that. I want us to think about that. I'm not saying yes or no, because I haven't really made up my mind about this project, but I just want people to be aware that this is a huge addition compared to what's allowed in this area. And I know it's a plan development, and we throw out all the rules, and we start all over, but there is a basic understanding that projects in that area will attempt to kind of conform to what the guidelines are, and everything else complies. It's the height that I think a lot of people have an issue with. So I just, I think that's something that we need to have a discussion at some point about. How do we deal with the realistic potential of this site? And I'm asking staff, because Michael has a vision for this site, okay? And it includes 1,600 people using this site. And I don't doubt that initially, that's what's going to occur at the site. My concern is, two, three, five years down the road, if he decides to sell it, okay? And somebody else comes in and they go, eh, you know, I just need to put some more air conditioning in the basement of the garage and get rid of some parking spaces, and now I can have 3,000 people there. And we don't get to have any say on that at that point, because the building's already built, and they're just remodeling the building. Am I stating that correctly, or am I, will the city have, have the ability to have impact if those things come forward down the road? I want to know what, not from the developer's point of view, I want to know from the city's point of view, whether future planning commissions would have the ability to impact those projects.
So since it's a PD, it's almost like a contractual agreement between the owner of the property and the city. And so if there was a significant change in, in something like that, if they were going to, if they wanted to increase capacity or increase the height or do a remodel, the city could say that it's an amendment to the planned development zone that was approved, and then that would have to go back through the planning commission and city council for review. In addition, if they wanted to replace the air conditioners, just let's say they came in and there was air conditioners that did twice the job that the air conditioners do today, with the same size of an air conditioner, they would still have to get a permit from the city of San Carlos, which is, you know, up to our discretion whether or not to approve such a permit. And that, again, could trigger, well, hey, if you want that permit, we think it's a significant change, so you're going to have to go back through a public hearing process.
So in theory, 10 years down the road, the air conditioning capacity could change, become much more efficient, and the occupancy of the building could double?
In theory.
In theory?
Yes.
Is there any way we, as a commission, have any ability to limit that? Or is it sort of, once we approve it, there isn't, there isn't anything we can do?
Well, as I noted, if there was any significant change in the way the building is used, like, maybe it's a use change, maybe, maybe knowledge-based businesses change into something else. And, you know, you can get 10 times as many people in there or something. The city does have the discretion. So you, as a, as a commission, the city as a, as an entity, has discretion because of this, this permit that you would be, you would have granted, which is the planned development permit. And also, well, it's primarily that. So any change to that, you could write a provision in the PD that says that any significant change in X would trigger, you know, a review of the, of the planned development agreement or an amendment as such, or review, some kind of a review process. So theoretically, you could craft some language in there to, you know, make sure that that happens, even though it's within the discretion of the city to do that.
Okay. Then I have a question for you. What's a reasonable number if we were to do that? And I don't want to hold you to the 1,600.
No, I'm not going to answer your question. So I, I think that you're misstating, really. So when you look at the TDM program, the TDM program limits the number of trips that the project can produce.
Okay.
And it's an annual update, so...
And it's an annual update.
That's going to trigger off of things.
Yeah, and it's an annual, so, so I'm not trying to minimize the legitimacy of your concern. Certainly, if this happens and Redwood Shore starts occupying at this, at this same rate, you know, you're going to, you know, it's, you know, we're going to see, you know, people reacting, wouldn't we? Because there's a lot more office product on the other side of the freeway from Holly Street than there is in San Carlos. However, going down the slippery slope path, the TDM program is the teeth in our transit-oriented project. So if you look at, the city has the ability to withhold occupancy permits, building permits, et cetera, et cetera, in the TDM program. So, and the TDM program limits the amount of total trips a project can produce. So that's all, I can reference you to the TDM program, which runs with the land, is essentially like a deed restriction that runs with the land. And so through any potential sale of the project, the TDM program would continue to be, the project would continue to be subject to the TDM program.
Okay, so essentially, looking at it, you have 1,500 parking spaces, okay? The TDM requires a 20% reduction, which essentially says 1,800.
TDM goes further. The TDM limits the total number of trips that this project can produce to 4,600 and something. Yeah, 80% of that number, which AMPM trips, total trips, okay? So the TDM program is already really doing what you're looking for, it's just doing it in, in a way that...
It's a general way, because it...
The city can actually follow up on it, right?
It's an annual update.
We're going to report to you annually, and there's a five-year update to the TDM program, and like we talked about, the TDM program states within itself, if these measures aren't working, if we're not getting the reduction, right, then there is the ability for the city to require additional measures.
Okay.
Yeah. And one thing I want to mention about...
I want to hear these answers, because these are questions that people have.
That's what's great about a study session, right? Is we can talk about this. So one thing I would mention as well is, cities used to require a certain amount of parking. Now cities restrict the amount of parking you can have. And the reason why is for the exact reason that you just brought up. It is a self-fulfilling governor on occupancy by keeping the car count low. So our, so our 1,510 trips is actually, if you compare it to a project in Santa Clara, we're parked much less than a project would be in a more suburban office park region.
So essentially, the way you could grow is by...
Using transit.
...non-vehicle traffic.
That's right.
Okay?
That's right.
And that would have the impact of, of increasing...
People eating at the restaurants in downtown.
Okay. Okay. So people have said that if you take the 5,200, the 528,000 square feet, and you divide it by the industry standard of 200, it comes up with 2,600. And I know I'm going over the same thing again.
Let's just go with it.
I got pages of this stuff. People ask questions. I'd rather get them out, answer the question, and go.
I understand.
So is that addressed in exactly the same way? Through the transit, through the TDM?
Yes. Again, there's a maximum number of trips allowed under the TDM.
You addressed the comments about whether it's visible from the neighborhood. You and I had a discussion about the height of the building. And one of the comments you said is that no other, and I told you I was going to bring this up, no other building close to the neighborhood could be 100 feet. Can you talk to me about that?
I'm trying to think about whether I want to put a slide up that I have to talk about that, or I'll just talk about it generally, and then if you want to see the slide. So I think Al really already answered the question, but essentially, there's a general plan, and these sites are zoned, and there's a traffic report done. And as you brought up tonight, we're using some of those trips for our project that are in the general plan. All the sites closer to the neighborhood from our project north are zoned heavy industrial. Our project complies with all zoning except for the height. So we're a PD. In order to go and change that, it would be a very different process. So that's why we're able to fall under the general plan, EIR, and do a mitigated negative declaration. So our whole process is driven by the fact that we comply with our density, with the number of trips, with the amount of square footage, all of that we comply with. There's just one change we're asking for, and that's height. So I think city staff could get into more detail about that, because they're much more versed in it than I am, but, but generally, that's what you and I had talked about.
Okay. Al, I'm going to ask you the same question. Is the likelihood that buildings closer to the neighborhood or parcels closer to the neighborhood could go to the same height?
I think you may see other proposals that will request a height of above 50 feet. So I think that that is a possibility, that you'll see that from, anywhere from, you know, the north side of the city, all along the 101 corridor. I think that's a possibility, that developers will want to do that. I mean, PAMF is, you know, was approved at 91 feet, and the tower element goes to 100 feet there. And that's close, pretty close to the neighborhood.
That was a very different project that had a significant community benefit.
Yeah. But I'm just saying that that's an example, and so that corridor is, you know, it's underdeveloped. PG&E has 18 acres there. You know, there's, there's still a site at Holly and Industrial, the Basior Electric site could change, and south. So there's a possibility that you could see other projects come in requesting above 50 feet, yes.
Which is sort of the reason I asked about, is there a plan to sort of tier away future projects from the residential neighborhood there?
The, the existing zoning is in place. That is what it is. Yeah, and, and again, we, we had this discussion during, very rigorous discussions about height during the zoning, and there was a green belt that was established around the neighborhood, a 10-foot-wide green belt, and tiering for buildings adjacent to the neighborhood, but not across industrial.
Okay. So I actually sat at the Traffic and Circulation Commission in the back, and one of the suggestions was to line up the streets at Commercial with the entrance to the project. Is that feasible? And the idea was that you could split the bioswale so that you could actually put a light at Commercial rather than at Branston.
It's, you're, you're way above my pay grade on that one. So that's, that's a traffic console. I, I don't know the answer. I think, yeah.
Think about it? It's a question?
No. So essentially, I mean, I am thinking about what we're talking about. No is, is the answer, because you wouldn't, yeah, no, I don't think you could line them up.
Except that it's directly across from your project, so there's no way to sort of...
That's why we're doing the left-hand turn out of Commercial. I think what we don't like is the fact that you want traffic to flow on industrial. And so one of the reasons we're getting rid of the left-hand turn out of the project, I don't know if you caught that, that, that intersection's going to be a right-hand, right-hand only. One of the reasons we're getting rid of the left-hand turn is to, is to help reduce the, that sort of on and off on industrial. But, you know, you're, you're above my...
The issue with that is that you're forcing traffic to Holly Street by making a right-hand turn only. Is there, is there a U-turn?
No, that's not correct. We're forcing traffic to Branston, where they would, if they were going southbound, would commit a U-turn there.
Is there a U-turn at that site?
Yes, there is.
Okay. That was going to be my next question. Okay.
What did we, Scott?
We're on page 2. Seven or eight.
Remember, there's 10:30 limit.
I would like to see some better explanation of the traffic numbers for the traffic consultant. It just seems to me that 1,300 trips from a shopping center, quote, "shopping center", underestimates the number of additional trips. Now, I understand that those trips may have been there a year or two ago, but the real impact of this project is going to be much greater, and we can have this discussion next time. What is the real impact based on current data? Whether it meets the SEQA numbers or not, I'd like to see what those numbers are. I mean, is it 1,000 an hour? Is it 600 an hour? I don't know. But I know it's more than the 453 that you've actually suggested in there. Okay?
I disagree.
You disagree?
But we'll move on.
Okay.
So, how is that data provided if it's 65% vacancy? I mean, you can't...
So, one of the things, you know, kind of one of the interesting things about this is, in one hand, a developer is told by folks, hey, make sure that you do right by the existing tenancy. And now, we're gonna say, because you've done that, well, forget about what the project would generate. What is it generating today?
Yeah.
And, you know, I had this email exchange with Dimitri and Paul after the traffic meeting. And, you know, one of the things that is, folks around here don't know what goes on there. Because if they did, they would understand what, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer. And so, I don't know, I can hardly read the graphs, just like, you know, a lot of people. But what I can tell you is that, I'll use Cydia's work as an example, or to read, these guys have a lot of trucks. They're doing service calls all day long, okay? The two tile shops, they have deliveries going out and in all day long. There's a gym there, okay? There's a karate studio, there was a yoga studio. I mean, these uses generate trips. If you have a class, you know, four gym classes a day with 50 heads, you know, you do the math, it generates hundreds of trips. So, I think that, you know, throw the traffic consultant under the bus because you don't like his numbers is different than, when you don't really know what the uses were.
I'm just asking for additional numbers. I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus or anything. I'm just trying to get, what are realistic numbers, okay? Based on...
I just think there's a difference of opinion on what a realistic number is.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, you may be the only one up here who's interested in those numbers. I mean, I'm really not super interested in what a 35% occupied building, what its numbers are, because I don't think that's any indication of what the numbers would be if this project were not approved. Because that's what I wanna compare it to, is what would the numbers be if this project is not approved? Or what would this project be if we approved a building that was 50 feet tall? Not, you know, what would this project, that is irrelevant.
Can I just go elbow with Nelson Icard? So, we do similar work to Kimblehorn, and Shopping Center is a mix of uses and has a lower trip generation rate than if you were looking at a specific type of shop in many, many of the rates. So, for looking at the existing development, it's a lower rate than assuming a higher-use retail. So, that's one of the things. In October 2015, when the traffic counts were done, Mike just confirmed that the vacancy rate was 8%. So, 92% was occupied at that time. So, the counts were done at a time when the development was more or less fully occupied.
Okay, okay. While you're there, why long-term parking, bike parking?
Long-term is just the extent of the stay. So, for instance, eight or 10 hours. So, most employees wants to have secure, want to have secure parking during the eight or 10 hours that they're in the office. Short-term is for the visitors coming to the site.
So, you've got 150 short-term and only 30 long-term?
Many, with the bike share program, for instance, that will provide, be provided onsite, it adds a lot of supply of parking for these...
That's only 30.
That's 30, but they need a couple of different spots, or three different spots, onsite to park these bikes. But in addition, that's a city requirement. So, the 150 spaces are just them.
And they can take it to their desks.
Oh, yeah. And then, in addition, you can bring them up inside, in door. So, it's according to city requirement, and then, in addition, you can bring them up to your desk.
Okay. Michael, can you show me the loading and unloading areas and where the guest parking is?
Yeah. So, part of our TDM program requires tenants to allow employees to take bikes to their desks, to answer your question about that. Okay, now, what am I doing?
It just seemed odd that there was 150 short-term and 30 long-term.
Okay, so you...
Long-term's eight hours.
Sixty, sixty, okay. Okay, so, you wanted to know, I'm sorry, Scott.
Loading and unloading and guest parking.
For individuals. So, you know, this plan doesn't show it great, and I wish I had a laser pointer, which I do, but it doesn't work. So, if you see the entry to the garage, is right there on the left-hand side of Branston. And as you come in, you'll see that there's a paved area outside of the footprint of the garage. Do you see that paved area, really prominent where the number four is? See the number four, Scott?
Yes.
Okay. That's the loading and unloading zone. Now, keep in mind, we elevated the first four of the garage so that you could pull buses into the garage. Again, the idea is, is that we're pulling all the traffic off Branston as quickly as possible. And so, we didn't want buses to have to pull over on Branston to drop people. We're actually allowing them to come into the project. Another reason we wanna get rid of the left-hand turn. If you think about the circulation, they'll come in, they'll drop off, they'll exit, hit the left-hand turn, and then could perform a U-turn to go southbound. But that's the drop-off area. Visitor parking is most proximate to that area, but can be scattered throughout. Because, keep in mind, one of our requirements here is part of our environmental silver level is to have bike, or carpool parking in this part of our TDM program, and, you know, battery chargers. And so, we try and make those prominent on the main level of the garage.
Okay, so the guest parking's on the upper level of the garage?
The guest parking can be anywhere in the garage.
Anywhere.
What has to be most beneficial is ADA first, then a carpool, a preferred carpool parking, and then preferred charging stations.
Okay, okay. And what about deliveries?
So, deliveries are, you'll see where number 11 is on either side of the building. So, this building isn't a design for large trucks. It's really designed for like FedEx or Staples, sort of a delivery. And so, they would back into that area where number 11 is.
Okay.
And there's a freight elevator in that part of the project. And again, that freight elevator's also gonna be used for, potentially for employees to take their bicycles upstairs as well.
Okay. Why three lots and not one?
A parcel?
Yeah.
That's an interesting question. So, it's really for financing purposes. So, the garage will have a CCNRs attached to it, which will be bound by the other two. This project would be too large in scale for a single bank to finance. So, each building will have a different lender.
Okay. Thank you. Dirt hauling. Seven days a week?
So, what I talked about earlier is it's a function of duration. And so, our goal is to get out of there as fast as possible. Now, keep in mind, the existing project, which even at 35% occupancy generates some traffic, and so, that project will no longer exist. The buildings will have been raised. And so, those trips will go away, and these trucks will replace them. And so, yes, we're trying to get that done as quickly as possible. The benefit of that is, then all the parking will be underground.
My concern with that is really the 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM weekday.
It just depends on how many months you want us to be there.
What are the options?
Well, it's a simple, it's, talk about math. That is the easiest math calculation. So, right now, yeah, you'll see, yeah.
Start calculating.
So, you'll see how many trips, you'll see the hours, you'll see how many trucks per hour, and you'll see the days. And so, we can extend the duration to eight months, but you don't want us to, so...
No, but let's look at what the impact would be of limiting that to 9:00 AM or 8:00 AM or something so that you're not impacting the commute.
Well, the seven's usually the low-hanging fruit, because people are still in bed.
Yeah.
But, yeah, our hope is, is that by staying away from Holly, that we aren't impacting the commute unnecessarily for those four months.
Okay.
But again, it's a function of trying to get out of there. And if you want us to look at that, I'll absolutely look at it. I mean, it's simple to figure out how many more weeks we'd have to do it.
How many more weeks you'd have to do it. Okay. Another thing is, and this was something I talked to you about very early on, is landscaping. And...
Hang on.
Dumb ass for, there's a lot of trees in this one. Are you...
I'm not gonna ask for more trees.
Hang on.
What I wanna know is the height of the trees. Because every picture I saw shows the maximum height of those trees, about 30 feet.
Okay, so, that, well, see that chart on the top of that graph? So, this graph is in, is this in your package?
Yes, yes.
So, at the top of the, there's a chart there. Now, you can't see anything on this, but your, that chart tells you all the heights. And I guarantee you that the oaks in front of the project are, I think they're 45 feet.
Okay.
But take a look at that chart. That's what will guide it.
Okay. You're, one of the questions that I have is, you're doubling the height, but you're only adding 50% to the landscaping.
No. It's all asphalt out there now, Scott. We're adding...
No, but I mean, when you're, you're asking for 100% exemption of, from 50 feet to 100 feet.
Okay.
Right? But in return, you're only giving back a 50% increase in the amount of landscaping space.
I don't under, no.
So, when you go from 15 feet to the 23 feet, that's eight feet, that's roughly a 50%.
Oh, you mean in the setbacks?
Not in the setbacks.
I don't understand what you're asking.
In the required amount of landscape is 15% of the project. Right?
I know.
What's required, not what's there currently.
Not what's there, what's required.
Oh, what's required, okay.
Is 15%.
And what are we providing?
And what you're giving is 23%. Yet, you're doubling the height, you're giving 100% additional height, and you're only giving 50% back on the landscaping.
I thought we said you were cool on the landscaping.
No, I said I wouldn't ask for any more trees.
Trees, okay.
If, Scott, if there's a project on the peninsula that you can find that is better landscaped than this project, I think we'll have something to talk about.
I just...
I'm just pointing it out.
That's fine. I wanna hear what's going on. Shuttles.
Yes.
I saw nothing in here in the TDM or any plan about shuttles.
Alora, I may, I may kick this to you, but I believe that our conditions of approval requires us to participate in any future, what's it called?
Transportation Management Association.
Transportation Management Association, which could, would govern shuttle systems. So, for example, if they got together and created association to fund shuttles, it requires us to participate, it's not elective.
Okay. Is there anything in here that limits where those shuttles go? Anything in the conditions of approval? That they need to go on the west side? Is that something we can incorporate?
On the west side?
Yes. Which means they have to use Britton, go down, and use the El Camino.
I think as the shuttle program is developed, then it would receive the input from the public about how that was done. It would be part of the program and part of the Transportation Management Association to manage that and ensure that the project complies.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be a specific condition of approval on this project, because it's not part of a shuttle right now. If it became part of a shuttle, it would have to comply with the conditions of approval of that program.
Can a condition be put in that states that any future shuttle that is part of this program needs to go on the west side? I mean, we just had this whole thing with the Transit Village about shuttles, and if it's not put in there, then...
You're talking about the multimodal?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just saying, if we use the...
You're talking about how it incorporates into the Transit Village, to the multimodal station?
How it incorporates, rather than come down and goes through the residential neighborhood.
So, I mean, I think that may be more of a question, perhaps, for the city attorney, but I'm guessing the answer is, if we required them to have shuttles, then we could limit where their shuttles went. But because we're only requiring them to participate in a program, it'll be up to the development of the program to decide where the shuttles go.
Agree.
Well, I would agree, well said. I think it's sort of a once-removed condition. We don't, we can't really condition something that doesn't exist yet, is the way I see it, so... But if there is, what I was, you know, communicating with staff about on a sidebar was that, that the program itself will govern the rules of where the shuttles are supposed to park. So, I don't see, I don't see a nexus between this particular project and the placement of the parking of the shuttles, because the program doesn't really exist right now.
The shuttles are already on the east side. Have the Transit Village program?
I'm just stating that this project, that we're not requiring shuttles, we don't have a shuttle program yet, so...
Does the current program that limits the number of shuttles on the east side to four, would that have any impact on the shuttle program?
That's probably a staff question, not for me, so...
Look it up.
So, yeah, I think we get your question.
So, I'll try and go through these as quickly as I can.
The capacity question, you're saying, is the capacity of the west side, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think we're getting the look up here that 10:30, so maybe ask your next three, two very important questions, and maybe you wanna submit the rest of the questions? Because I don't think we're gonna get an extension.
Okay.
Just being honest.
Yeah. Okay. So, you've got all these people walking to the train station at the moment, because you have no shuttle. How are you gonna deal with rain, bikes? It seems like there's going to be a lot more people who will be getting rides from other people. And that's one of the concerns about additional vehicles, additional people walking through the neighborhoods. If we can have a discussion at some point about how to potentially think about that as ways to direct people in a, an alternate route than what we anticipate will happen. So, your traffic numbers, they include catering and people visiting, and what type of services are you going to have onsite?
Frederick Venture Kimblehorn. So, I mentioned that the IT rates are empirical data, which means that IT went out and counted sites. Those sites would have exactly all those uses included. So, they would go out for a day and count all the traffic that would be generated. So, employees, business, drop-off, landscape architects, every single trip that goes to the site included.
Okay, so those fit in the 4,600 sites. One of the things that bothers me about TDMs is, we have no existing data on any of the TDMs in the city. It would be useful for staff to provide any information on existing TDMs and how they're working.
And through the chair, to answer your question, Commissioner Marcer, as we are currently in the process of having our first annual review with PAMF, and be happy to report back. And it's required that we report back to the Planning Commission on how they're doing, and that will be coming forward in the near future.
Okay. And since you brought up PAMF, I wanna make sure that the trees are what you say they're going to be, because the anticipation with PAMF and their whole project said that they were gonna put in... they were going to put in trees so nobody would ever see PAMF, and you and I have had this discussion about how poorly that has been done, and how poorly the landscaping at PAMF actually is as far as hiding that project from the residents who live in the neighborhood. So I just want to make sure that when we talk about landscaping again, that we anticipate that those trees will be the size that you anticipate, and that the landscaping is for the life of the project.
Yes, and it may be a distinction between a for-profit venture and a nonprofit venture.
Okay.
It matters what our buildings look like.
And I'm going to end there and give you two minutes.
Wow! Thanks, Scott. And then you just want to submit the rest?
What?
You want, do you want to submit the rest?
I will. I'll take care of sending it.
Any other questions for applicant, consultants? Getting adjourned.